There's only one item on this agenda of this August 18, 2017, 5:25 PM agenda. This is the City Council Special Call Meeting. The only agenda request is Item Number Two, Discussion and Take Any Action Necessary Regarding A Request To Remove All Items From 2017-2018 Balingine Budget Regarding The Shared Use Path, Also Known As The Balingine Bicycle Trail, And That This Shared Use Path Project Be Brought Back To Council For Re-Evaluation At A Later Date. Now, there is no, there is no public hearing mentioned on this agenda. Salomon, did you intend to have a public hearing?
I, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? I consulted with our attorney and she said citizens can comment at the 5:25 meeting on the shared use path item if a majority of the council wants to allow public comment on the item. And since there were no forms to fill out, I would like to make a motion that we allow public comment on this item and that the regulations fall under the same terms that it does for a regular council meeting of the three minutes. That is my motion.
I'll second it.
Alright. We have a motion and a second, and the motion also required three minutes as a maximum time for public comment. Is there any discussion among council, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor? Alright, it is unanimous, and so we will allow public comments up to three minutes.
May I, just since we didn't sign in, if we just start by the rows? I haven't let them speak, because I don't know any way to do it.
Alright, well, that sounds fair to me. I only have the comment, anyone have any difficulty with that? Alright, well then, let's start with my left in the first row. Is there, is there anyone here in the first row who wants to make a public comment? Start with me. Okay.
I would like to. I would like to know if the Balingine Administrative Budget is going to be reduced, and also if the city manager is going to be removed.
Those are...
Budget, yeah. But I see it's a public hearing. She's the one who has a public hearing.
Alright, the question was, is the Balingine Administrative Budget going to be reduced? And I think the second part, if there are only two parts inside, is whether our city manager, Frank Baker, is going to get erased. And I have to say at this point, I think you're on the wrong agenda. We have, this agenda is about the shared use path.
And please remember to state your name, too.
Yep. The bike path was first going to pass the microphone.
Hi, I'm Jan Walker. Van Alstine's a great place to live, but in my opinion, we are not going to bring in new residences and businesses by providing them with a bike and hiking bike trail, or now called the shared use path. Let's face it, Texas is too hot to bike to school or to work, and besides that, there are no businesses or industry that are within biking distance of Dallas Street. I'm not in favor of raising taxes for the purpose of this trail, or for hiring a new admin employee. However, if taxes are going to be raised, let's hire a code enforcer and a lawnmower that will get our many basic laws laid back.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you've gone off the agenda here. This is about the shared use path strictly. It's not about the budget, except to remove all items regarding the shared use, shared use path. That's the only item.
Then you've heard my feelings.
Karen Toiber, and I would like to state that I am opposed to us continuing on into any of the additional phases of the Bike and Pedestrian Trail, as that is the correct title, as it is stated in the application to the state. The city does not have enough people here to support such a thing. When we get to Phase Two, we'll be taking people's roadway, their driveways, their trees, their magnolia trees, pecan trees, the crepe myrtles, to widen the street, to include the width of the street plus the path. And to put a trail or a path down that's seven inches thick of concrete is just absurd. We could land an airplane on it. So, we don't have the funds for this. We have other things in the town that we could be spending the money on, such as parks, splash trail for the kids, ballparks. We could also be using it for the buying property, for industry, to bring industry in. So, there are much better ways that we can use this money. So therefore, I do not support this trail.
Karen, I have a question for you. You stated that, can y'all hear me? Alright, well, I almost speak louder. You said the continuation of the bike trail. Does that mean that the first phase, or...
It's done.
The first phase.
First phase has been approved. It is going on for bids this month.
Yes, ma'am. I want to clarify, it's from...
Phase Two on, that there's no need for it to continue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Colton Flynn, and I've got two young boys here in Van Alstine, and my five-year-old is starting kindergarten. And, you know, I have always been really excited myself about the hiking bike path. Currently, my wife and my family go to Anna, and I just, this is the reality of it, that's where we go to ride on the path, and if the kids get to get on their bikes, and it's something that is a real neat opportunity, in my opinion, for our town. The path itself, from what I've heard, is, I've heard some people that aren't for it because it's going to be taking people's land, but from what I understand, and I think we need to understand this factually from the engineers, is that it's going to be on top of an existing easement that's already in place. It's not taking additional land, from my understanding. And it's going to cover up the bargages on Dallas Street, which would be safer for the kids. I mean, I remember playing in them when I was a kid, but, you know, we have an opportunity for the state to pay 80 percent of this project. When we talk about the best paying for the buck, it seems like, you know, this is a good project, one we've been working on for four years. It just feels like we're getting the wind taken out of our sails here, and I hope everybody does get the factual information, and we understand what the implications are of pulling the plug before decisions made.
Can I ask Mr. Flynn a question? If I may ask him a question. Mr. Flynn, you're the head of the CDC.
Yes, ma'am.
And as you know, we spent $100,000 on Phase One last year. We have $100,000 in the budget this year, but the EDC is not paying a third. Is the CDC prepared to pay two-thirds? And if it fails tonight, is the CDC prepared to pay the full $100,000 to keep this plan going?
No, unfortunately, the CDC doesn't have the funds to do that, but up until now, we've all been united. We all have been expecting the EDC and the CDC and the city to work together on making this a reality, and that's the way we've been working for the last four years. So, if this falls apart, the CDC does not have the funds to be able to proceed, and we're going to lose out on a very good grant opportunity, in my opinion. But if we can't afford it, then that's another story. I just hope that we all understand exactly all the facts here before the decisions made.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Plank, ex-council member at one time. I just want to say that I'm, and too, I'm in favor of the building of this bike, hiking bike trail. I think the kids need it. It's, the places, the towns that have built them, they're highly used, the people really love them. Eventually, there's supposed to be a connection. If we build our part, and Anna builds her part, Melissa builds her part, you should be able to ride a bicycle from here to downtown Dallas, if you ever want to go to downtown Dallas. But, you know, it does give you that option. My son tried riding out here right after we moved here, which is like 10 years ago, and he made it as far as Melissa before he ran out of side roads that he couldn't ride on anymore, and he finally called my wife and said, "Come get me, I'm giving up on it now." But he made it all the way from, let's see, Dallas, I think he was in when he left. The money, like you said, is coming from, a lot of it is coming from the federal government. They don't do these things lightly. They do, I'd hate to see us, I don't know, but I would definitely think that you need to check into determining that if we don't put it in the budget, and we don't schedule it, then do we have to cancel it, and, you know, how long do you have to make those decisions, and to go that direction with it? I feel that it's a very, we need to realize that it's not that costly out of each individual's pocket to do it. As far as most of your senior citizens are concerned, people on fixed income, they're probably not going to pay for it anyway, because they're going to get their tax, their taxes are already frozen where they are now. So whether you increase tax rate to build this, or keep it in the budget, won't make any difference to them whatsoever. It won't affect them one way or the other. Thank you.
I'm James Flannery, and I have a prepared request that we, the undersigned citizens of Van Alstine, Texas, do hereby request the city council, mayor, and city manager to please suspend any current plans for the proposed, and I've been told it's the Van Alstine Shared Use Path, until such time that the city's necessary needs have been met. And I have 135 additional signatures at the same time.
How many signatures?
135.
135.
135, plus me.
Plus, 136. Thank you for that input.
My name's Judy Smith, and I didn't really intend to say anything about this, but I want to thank the city for the new playground area down there. My grandkids are loving it. And the bike trail, sounds great. I don't ride, can't ride a bike. My daughter and son-in-law love to ride, and they have to go pretty much out of town. But I see Anna and Melissa kind of ahead of us on their parks, their water park, and their bike trails, so you know how we like to keep up with Anna at least. So, thank you, that's all.
They're sort of three times larger than we are, too.
We all started out the same, their parks got ahead of us.
Yes, my name is Pat Patterson, and I served on this city council for 19 years, for 19 years. And I want to know who in the world started this, but I'd ask the citizens, no public hearing, nothing I've heard about. I've been here all the time. I mean, why'd you start the thing that's been going on for four years and nobody knew about? I'm asking whoever can answer that.
Was there ever a public hearing regarding this?
Certainly, ma'am. There was a public hearing held back in 2013 for the entire plan. It was adopted by council. It has been accepted. The plan can be...
This was four years ago?
Yes, ma'am. This has been worked on for four years.
Well, number two, Mr. Baker, who gives you or the city council or anybody the right to not let all the citizens know about where you're going to spend their money, tax money? And I don't think you or nobody else has the right to spend the money out of my pocket. And I'm completely 110 percent against it.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Lewis, and, you know, when we first heard about this on the CDC board, it was to go down Highway Five. Now, I don't know when it got changed to go down Dallas Street and start interfering with public property, but now Highway Five was a great plan for myself, and I voted for it. But now I see maybe I was wrong in voting for it because nobody informed the citizens that it was going to be changed in going down Dallas Street. That's not fair to those people on Dallas Street if you didn't send them any leverage, advising them what was taking place, and it was being changed. So I wholeheartedly disagree with it at this time. Thank you.
I'm Dennis Goddard, I'm living three by four south of Dallas. Probably be very affected by this. But we lived here to raise our five-year-old, take her through 12th grade here, and have a home to come home to for college. It's the reason we're here. We could have settled anywhere, obviously. We chose to be honest, because we like this town, we like this small town, we like the fact that we're a little more of a Walmart. We hope that it can stay in the same small town. I know it's going to change, everything changes, but I personally, you know, sometimes I have no problem with writing that. 12 feet is an issue. 6 feet, I don't have a problem. I'm the loose two trees. I know that. The two trees on my property, that's it. But I know that, I'm on the sacrifice side, because I believe that if we can have not just the kids on bikes, the parents walking with the kids going downtown, spend the money downtown, enjoy the downtown, but also, you know, I'm worried that I'm disconnected and circuit connected, and I use a mobility scooter to walk, what would normally be a walk. I have to use a mobility scooter, and in five, maybe 10 years, possibly longer, I'm moving in a scooter full-time. And so, I think that also, for me personally, and if that's why I'm here, is going to be a benefit, then I can go for walks with my daughter, I can take my daughter to walk. Right now, the streets are not really conditioned to a mobility scooter, and I know we have some old facilities in this town, you know, that would benefit from being able to access downtown using a scooter. And, you know, I ride my bike to school every day in Beaumont, Texas. Granted, that was years ago, but there's things getting warmer, so I think the problem with kids riding is that, is that we don't know what they can see. And it's not okay to ride bikes in the street when you're a kid, because you're a kid, and you're not allowed to. But a bicycle, sidewalks, which is what happened, and sidewalks are not allowed by law to ride a bicycle on sidewalks. And so having this bike path, I think it's going to join the community. We live here because there's possible schools, and because of the community, and if we can tie them all together and have some fun with it, which I think, you know, and the others can be some sacrifice there. But I got to say, if it's tied into the separating waygo in the two lanes, two separate roads coming down one, coming down my street, I don't want Highway Five to march out. And if you're putting the bicycle trail next to Highway Five, that's not saving kids, that's putting them in danger. Because in the space of 18 miles, figure a vehicle would dump you off, okay? But I'm going to just say it straight out, but, you know, if you're driving 18 miles, you'd probably get, you know, probably get a tank of fuel. So, that may sound ridiculous, I don't know, but that concerns me greatly. I don't want Highway Five down the road. So, I'll pass that along.
Can I ask that a question to the city manager and clarify something for us? I actually don't know the answer, but I know it's come up before. Are we allowed to have motorized, trying to figure the right word?
Mobility scooters.
Yeah, no, I know that, but I'm thinking of motors, I thought was the defining thing. We're not allowed to have motorized accessory vehicles on the bike path.
Mobility scooters are...
Lynn is here. This is our engineer.
If it's battery-operated, it's, and it's a mobility-type scooter, it does have an exception to the rule. It's out of gas and diesel-powered vehicles that aren't, motorbikes, ATVs, like that.
Okay, those types of things. Okay, I wanted to make sure. Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Flanagan. I'm against the bike path. My wife and I, we live on Dallas Street, and we have two boys, two big pecan trees that potentially will be losing, and my boys love to forage for pecans. I feel like the main reason why we moved here was the feel of the town and the spirit of nature, and I feel like adding the bike path on our street will kind of diminish that for us in a way. And I'm just really not for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Elise Flanagan. I'm also a resident of Dallas Street. My yard would be affected by this, and I am vehemently opposed to diverting Highway Five into my yard. I'm opposed to taking the part of my yard that isn't part of the easement. Not only would my small children be affected by it, but there's a lot of wildlife in those trees that you're potentially talking about taking. And if we got into the nitty-gritty of measurements, and we were able to save those trees, those pecan trees would be overhanging the bike path. And as we all know, pecan trees are known for falling branches. That would put every pedestrian in danger. I work in mortgage litigation, very familiar with eminent domain, and I also know that if you make it my responsibility to maintain that path, I'm assuming the risk. My homeowner's insurance will go up with that increased risk. My property value will go down with that increased risk. I know that if you give me money for my land, that most likely that's going to go to my first lien holder, my only lien holder. I'm not going to see that money. Yes, it will reduce my principal balance, I'm not going to see that money. I'm opposed to this bike path. I'm not opposed to Phase One. I think it's a great idea to connect Balingine to the schools. The kids don't have a place to walk. I think it's wonderful. It'll keep them safe. I don't want Highway Five in my front yard. I would have moved to a busy street if I wanted to live on a busy street. So I have to say, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Where's, I don't, I'm a little confused on the Highway Five part on Dallas Street.
That's an entirely different project than what we're discussing tonight. What we're discussing tonight is the bike trail, and the bike trail and the Highway Five is with the thoroughfare plan, and that is not what is before the public tonight, the thoroughfare plan. We're only discussing the shared use path, and it is, I don't know if they have decided yet whether it will be one 12-foot wide path, or two 6-foot wide paths, one on each side of the road that I, Lynn.
That's still...
It hasn't been decided. It would be one or the other, that either way. But it is not, this, tonight's meeting has nothing to do with the thoroughfare plan, which pertains to Highway Five coming through town, changing.
And then the Highway Five thoroughfare has no connection with money's...
Not tonight, tonight. This is a different...
They're not that at all, together?
They're not together, no. These are two separate things, two separate items. So tonight, we're just discussing the bicycle trail, our shared use path.
Come back when you see things about the comprehensive plan, that's when you want to have a voice on that.
Yes, on the Highway Five project. So tonight...
That will come up this year.
We'll hear what you have to say about the bicycle path.
Lynn? So, for everybody's knowledge and mine, please. The first phase is designed, is engineered, designed, going out for bid, as Karen said earlier, that's it. Right? We're going to the dance on that one.
Bids are being advertised next week. Bids are to be accepted at the city on September 28.
Is Stage Two, which is the little short leg, asked that?
Yes.
Has it been accepted?
No, it has not.
It has not been accepted.
Has it been engineered?
Pardon me, I'm going to ask, and y'all will talk over each other. I believe you have the floor.
Has Phase Two been engineered?
Nope. It is not allowed to be engineered until it is funded by the federal government.
Okay, so Phase Two hasn't even been funded by the federal government?
No, the application for funding is in. Tech dot has reviewed the first cycle of projects, and it passed the first cycle with Tech dot. It is in the second go-round, and if it gets out the second go-round, it will probably be funded. Right now, this is all, this is in anticipation of the federal government, Tech dot approving Phase Two.
Got you. So Phase Three, that would go down Dallas Street in one of these people's houses.
Texas, they need...
Phase Four.
Well, there is, we have it.
Right. So we're not even, we're not even close to that yet.
Yeah, right.
So, the path, including Phase Two, right? Not just, not Phase One, but everything after Phase One, two, three, four, five. That map up there can change at any point. We could take it anywhere else. It could go anywhere else.
Right. And as a matter of fact, our board talked about it last night, there is a, the funding in there to do a parks master plan, which can include an update of the trail and the trail locations. And based on last night's discussion, I would anticipate that that would be in there.
Okay, so, alright. So other than Phase One, nothing, all natural is renewed, is done?
No, nothing, no. And the application is in, if we get funding for it, we may have to, you know, if we don't want to go down into Dallas Street with the funding that we have, which is, you know, the city's portion is about $100,000, but the federal government is about $500,000 on that. If Dallas Street is decided not to be done, the city still has that funding available, so we could possibly route it around North Farm, you get it to the new elementary school, or something like that, if that's the desire to be, well, the council will. But we'd have to re-submit, we'd have to ask for an addendum to the application on the funding that has been approved.
Correct, okay.
But tonight's discussion is removing the funding in our budget for 20...
Ms. Salomon, you had some, you started some commentary, and I cut you off. Did you have something to add?
Thank you, mayor. What I was saying was, nothing has been, if we withdraw now, before any of this is done, then we are not penalized. And that's what it's about tonight, is it was $100,000 the first, last year, it's another $100,000 this year that's in the budget. And tonight, what the agenda request is, that this, this of their funding be removed from the budget, and this be brought back to the council at another, later, much later date, but it be taken out of the budget, the $100,000 out of the budget tonight. And that's what this is for. And it's all the funding that it, that has, that's in the budget, right, concerning the shared use path. Thank you, mayor. I think the lady right there on that is...
Does council have any other additions? What I believe, Ms. Cole, you started speaking.
Okay, well, I don't know if my comments are changing, but I, we moved to Van Alstine three years ago because my husband works in Fort Worth. We didn't want to live in Metro Plus. We love the small town, we love the schools, it's the perfect fit for our family. I live on the corner of Dallas and Balingine. I'm thrilled with the idea of Phase One, going with the schools, I think it's a fabulous idea. In theory, I love the idea of a bike path. I love the thought of connecting the town together, being able to do that, our family tries to be really active and involved outdoors, so in theory, I love that. But as I am on the corner of Dallas, there's, my neighbors across the street from me do not have 6 feet to take. They do not. So that, whatever they're saying, the engineering, that 12 feet would come from my yard. I'm not interested in that. I didn't know, it was not presented to me, that the Highway Five thing was separate from this, so maybe that changes things, but I'm not interested in that traffic going down my street, and since we're not talking about that tonight... Our family tries to be really active and involved outdoors. So in theory, I love that. But as I am on the corner of Dallas, there's... My neighbors across the street from me do not have 6 feet to take. They do not. So that, whatever they're saying, the engineering, that 12 feet would come from my yard. I'm not interested in that. I didn't know, it was not presented to me, that the Highway 5 thing was separate from this, so maybe that changes things. But I'm not interested in that traffic going down my street, and since we're not talking about that tonight, I won't bring that up. But on school mornings, Highway 5 is super busy, and I'm not interested in that. So I'm... I am in favor of the bike path if it does not go down Dallas Street.
And I'll take the mic for just a second, because part of the proposal... Well, we're still... We're talking about Phase 2 right now. But if we should, I want to ask Lynn, our engineer, if we do drop out of this for a year, and is it going to appear that to the federal government or to Tech Dot that we're losing interest in the project?
What? Actually, the only reason it's on this year, it was three years ago, there was a call for projects, Van Alstine was awarded. It takes about three years to get through the negotiation process, the design process, and the bidding process. So this is just their next call for projects, which happened to be three years later. We anticipate that there'll be continued calls for projects three years from now. I don't know... We don't have the history on if we decline... If we get funded and we decline it, if they would hold that against Van Alstine in the future. So...
Is it a possibility?
I don't... We're not part of that process, so, you know, it may put a black eye on Van Alstine, it may not. I can't say for sure. But, you know, the only reason it's on this year's budget is there was a call for project. We did a short, you know, with the budget constraints that were going on, we did a shorter project than obviously Phase 1. So that, you know, that was the application that the council said that they would support.
Mayor, if we withdraw before we're funded, we won't get a black eye, because we won't be pulling out after being funded. It will be before it was ever funded. Isn't that correct?
That's also a political issue.
Maybe it shouldn't happen. I'm not sure whether it will or not, not being a part of that body, that descend, to make you right. I'd also like to add about Dallas Street. As it has been said, there's nothing set in stone. There's nothing saying that it's... That Phase 3 is going to go down Dallas Street. That could be changed. But there was also a proposal that if it does go down Dallas Street, that it would be split. If it hadn't been said already, that it could be split 6 foot on either side, not 12 foot feet from one side or the other.
My neighbors do not have 6 feet on their side, so that's not an option.
Hello, my name is Joey White-West, and I live at 412 North Dallas Avenue. Now, I agree also, it'd be nice to have that type of a thing in our community for people, to be honest with you. I don't see that many kids out on bikes. I don't see that many adults out on bikes. Could be the area, could be the streets that are so bad, and the sidewalks that are broken, the sidewalks that are not there, the barges that are full of water or partially full, and whole mosquitoes that are broken. But the thing about it is, if it should come down my street, I'll be stepping out my front door to see a bike path and to see people. That's not what I'm looking for. So I am not in favor of it in my neighborhood or on my street, possibly where there are more houses with larger yards or something. I don't know, but not on North Dallas Avenue.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Phoebe, and I live at 1177 South Dallas Avenue, and that's the corner of South Dallas and Heinz Street. And both the streets in front and on the side of my house is gravel. And we've only been here a year, and since we've been here, we've tried to pretty up our property. It wasn't too pleasing to the eye when we bought it. So now, I'm in a position of what will we do? Because a 12-foot would be right to my front doorstep. We'll take both the trees in our front yard, and it would tend to be right up to our driveway on Heinz Street that goes into our garage that we built since we've been there. So, you know, I do like bike trails and walking trails, but not down South Dallas, because that's a housing addition, and it's not scenic at all. And to me, it looks like you could find someplace other than Dallas Street to put a walking path. And I love living in Van Alstine. Our daughter moves here. That's the reason we moved here, as we're getting older, so we wanted a little house in a nice area. It's nice and quiet where we live, and I'm afraid the bike path would absolutely ruin our property. And so I'm totally against the bike path. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dylan Deeks, ladies and gentlemen. And I'll get there. Yes. Do we have a map of any place that is better than this? Does the state have any idea of how they're going to put the... What they do? How would the... How they'll dive on there?
Different discussion.
But on this map, on this... I've tried to get a decent map of the city office, but it's the same assistance we have here. If they put a bike path from there at my house, where my house sits at Dallas Street and Heinz Street, they call it now, the house told me it's an alley, and they call it an alley. So there's going to be 290-degree turns on the bike path. You've got to make it that way, and then go back out on the left by where the old Highway 5 is. So I just don't think there's anything really good about it except it. There are other places that I've driven around and seen that it was nice, but it's just not for... I would think it is already.
I'm Shannon Morgan, and I'm going to come from this as a mom's perspective. We've raised two children here. They spent 12 years in the school system here, and have both graduated. In that time, driving up and down Highway 5, watching all the kids ride bikes to school from as far as Georgetown up towards the middle school, I am totally for this bike path and would be against taking that out of the budget, especially since they broke ground on the new elementary school. These children that go up and down Highway 5, I can't even tell you the times that brakes have been slammed on, hearts have stopped, with kids almost being hit walking up and down Highway 5. This path would provide a safe haven for them to walk to and from school, or ride their bike to and from school as need be. I had the privilege of driving my kids to school, but I have relatives and friends who did not have the luxury of, you know, taking their kids to school, and their kids had to walk up and down Highway 5, so that's right.
Thank you.
I'm Randall Morgan, and I'm currently the school board president, so I'm going to put that out there. Speaking just on behalf of the board, I'm going to do two parts here. This is on behalf of the board, trustee. But the school actually gave right away for this project, for the first phase, due to the safety issue because of all the students having to walk and bike and what they do up and down Highway 5. We felt that was very important, obviously with the growth and just all the additional students we'll have with the additional elementary. We'll have three schools right there in that area, so we felt that was very important. Obviously, as the town continues to grow, you know, the other elementary, we have neighborhoods that kids are going to want to get to. All the schools, kids from Georgetown are going to need to get to the middle school. Some of those may want to ride bikes and do those kind of things that you can't really do now. So for that reason, we felt it's very important. We felt, as a board, felt like it's a great project for the community. So I'm going to leave that, and Dr. Brown will speak more for the district here in a second. So I'm going to take my school board hat off, and this is just Randall, the property owner and local citizen, speaking. But first of all, I want to commend the council, the staff, pardon heads, everybody. We appreciate everything you do and the difficulty of what you're trying to do. We all want the small-town feel. We all have to deal with the coming growth. There's a lot of unknown. I mean, you face a lot of similar challenges that we do on the school board, and you try to do a lot with a little, and try to please everybody at the same time. It's a very difficult task. And we all know we're never going to satisfy everybody, and everybody in the room knows. It just can't be that way. So we just have to find a common ground here. But I applaud you for some of the things that have been said here, because it's great that we have a community that you can... We can have these kind of open conversations here about the facts. And some of the things that were said is already starting to kind of create some potential solutions here as the Phase 2. And there's just options, a lot of options available, that if there's a way it can be improved, then, you know, that's the way the discussion should go. And if there's other paths or options to the whole... I mean, there's six phases to this thing, so it's going to go east-west, a lot of different directions, not just Dallas Street, which I know is a lot of people's concern right now. But so it's just, you know, those things can all be resolved with little planning. And the thing to remember is, if you heard, this didn't start just two weeks ago. This is a four-year-old plan. And so I encourage you to keep that in mind. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that these folks over here do with the government and all the things that have to take place just to get it to this. And it's not very often that you can invest $150,000 and get three-quarters of a million dollars of the rest of your project paid. And I think most of you could pay $100,000 and somebody'd build you a $600,000 house, and that was your investment. You'd probably take that deal all day long. So that's kind of what goes on with these, with these brands. We're very fortunate to get it. So anyway, I just commend you guys for, you know, what you're doing, and you're on the right path. Thanks.
Mr. Morgan, can I ask you a question, just to put this in perspective for the next phase? What's your annual budget at the school?
12... 13. Give or take.
Okay. So not quite five times our budget?
Correct.
My name is Dennis Smith, and although I am currently serving as the vice president on the school board, I'm not going to wear that hat from that. I just want to talk to you as a dad. Catherine and I moved here nine years ago and have raised, actually graduated, three of our kids. And we have two currently in school. And I can empathize with all the Dallas Street homeowners, because I'm going to give a little wink back here to Lynn. Catherine and I moved into the house that John Heinz built on Kelly Lane in 1962. Excuse me. And when we moved there, we didn't have any neighbors, about three houses on the street next to us, and it was a lot of cornfields and empty lots. And not long ago, Frank had to come out and visit with us and say, hey, we're going to have to... We're going to have to take some of this property here that's on the easement and put some concrete down to help get into the new development. And we were not thrilled at all. I can empathize. Nobody wants to give up anything. So I say, I can empathize with that, and I'm not... I'm not going to speak negatively about that at all. What I want to say is, we have, in the nine years, I don't know how many bicycles have ridden by my front porch on Kelly Lane, but I would love to have a bike path on our street, because it's dangerous for my kids to ride their bikes. I have gone through seven bikes in nine years for our kids, and we've had many near misses and with cars on Kelly Lane. We'd love to have a bike path and give our kids that opportunity. I serve on the school board because I love and care for our kids. And so frankly, I'm just coming at this from the perspective of, I think it's safe for our children. And somebody made the comment, I don't think it would bring businesses into Van Alstine, but man, I think any community that has a growing, thriving community full of families, people want to do business there. They want to have a business there. So I believe that it's extremely positive, and I'm 110% for it, in the hope that we can find a solution to maybe work around Dallas, the street or whatever. But thank you for the opportunity to speak to this, and I'm 110% for it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having us today, y'all. We appreciate this. My name's David Brown. I'm a secretary tenant at Van Alstine. I want to talk to y'all a couple of phases here. First of all, when we look at going from north of the high school all the way basically to Blasen Game, that is a safety issue that we've discussed numerous times. If you come to that high school or to that middle school at 3 o'clock and cars going down that highway, there are kids left and right walking up and down that highway, where right now, they're walking in a bar ditch. All right? There's many times that they don't even get in the bar ditch, they're on the shoulder. And so being able to have a pathway, we thought it was important enough where we gave a pathway all the way down that road, and we owe probably 90% of that road to Blasen Game. On the second side of that, I do understand the Dallas Drive issue. One of the things everybody needs to consider, though, is decisions sometimes aren't always about it being a little bit of money. It's about the safety of everybody. And so let's move into the future of where that neighborhood's going to be. In the future, a year from now, we are going to have a elementary there that holds 800 kids. There are houses that are going to go in on Graywood. There's houses that are going to go in around ours. There's houses on the other side of Blasen Game that are all going to be going to that campus. And at that campus, our state law says that within a two-mile radius of a school, we don't provide transportation. We do it right now because it's a safety issue, and so places where we think it's a major hazard, we can go and transport our kids. But there's going to be a lot of kids right in there that... It's not a major thoroughfare. They're going to be walking to school, either to the elementary or to the middle school. And then some of those are going to continue because they're close enough to that high school. So if we have to make an addendum and move it somewhere else, we need to look at those options, because we are going to have young kids that are going to be walking to school or riding to school. And so maybe it's not on Dallas Drive, but we don't need to kill the project because we don't like where it's located now. We need to look at that money, think about our kids, and look at different options. And I understand, I wouldn't want to give up any of my yard either, but, you know, killing one just because we don't like that option when we already have been told that we can look at other options is not a reason to kill it. And so from a school's perspective and from a safety perspective, I would hope that all of y'all can look into that future and see what that area is really going to look like here in a year or two years, and what are we going to do for those kids that are going to go into those campuses? Thank you.
Dr. Brown, how many kids in the school system?
We currently have 1,600 kids in the school system. As of today, in fact, it was 1,607.
And can I get some clarification from Lynn for everybody? Because I'm still getting confused. I heard that this bike path was for one thing, yet we all think of it as a bike path for kids. What is the purpose of this path? And what did the federal government tell us? And what did we say we would use it for?
Well, the Federal Highway Administration, who is the one, the federal agency funding...
Mayor, can you get that over to him? Because I know we're all going to want to know what he should have said. Thank you.
Hey, just to let y'all know, Gunner's story.
I can see y'all. The definition of a shared use path by the Federal Highway Administration, which is the federal agency funding the construction part of this, is called a shared use path serves as part of a transportation circulation system and supports multiple recreation opportunities such as walking, bicycling, and inline skating.
So it is a recreational path?
It's a transportation circulation system that has recreational opportunities.
Yes. What does that mean?
It's the federal government definition.
I heard recreation, I heard transportation.
Well, and it's meant...
Pretty much everything?
Well, everything except motorized vehicles, ATVs, dirt bikes, things like that. It's for access to and from that is non-vehicular.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I understand you say it's for skating.
Inline skating is actually in the definition.
In the definition.
Well, I've got the microphone over here. I think maybe it's been made clear, but what all comes with path, what's going to be built by the federal government through Tech... by the federal government through Tech Dot, along with the path? Have any bar ditches have been mentioned?
Okay. Yeah, to clarify, if you've seen the schematic right behind the yellow right there, this is currently what Phase Two has been submitted to the Tech Dot. And it is using the existing asphalt street as the street, but then building a six-foot concrete bike trail with curb and gutter and drainage on it. So what we'll be able to do, all it is to take in the edge of this existing street, building, and building a six-foot concrete path with curb and gutter and storm sewer on it to the outside of it. And then what that allows us to do is urbanize because the city doesn't have the budget to build the middle part where the existing asphalt is. It allows us to build a template for the permanent concrete street in the future. But by doing the curb and gutter on it, the federal government will be paying for the drainage improvements, getting rid of the bar ditches and putting storm sewer in there. So it's kind of a win-win for everybody. We get to, get to update the drainage and the street skate by using the existing asphalt street, then just put basically corner, you know, adding a six-foot strip of concrete on either side that will be the future template for the future street when the city can afford to expand the street.
What street does that show?
This is Dallas Street.
I have a couple of questions for the little Phase Two. I'm sorry, my name's Darren Clon. I have a question. So Phase One is already approved, right? And that's just the one going right up here. So, but you've got segments here. All right. Where do those fall into phases? Okay. Because that's really, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, well, and these segments, these segments were done by a landscape architecture firm back in 2012, just kind of dividing the city up east-west, north-south in some frequency. So when we go to, when we get the call for projects from Tech Dot for projects, we get with Frank, we get with the council and determine what the city, you know, the 20% that the city could afford on that and then go forward. So although there are six segments, it could be 20 phases based on the city's ability to fund their 20%.
Okay, and so the reason you selected Dallas Street, the main reason is because you want to go ahead and have the state paper infrastructure that you think you're going to need to review the street already? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out why Dallas Street was selected.
Well, because...
There's a lot of other streets that have unused and unpaid areas on it.
Well, because it would be continuous for Phase One. We'd be able to tie onto it and...
And just break it straight on that.
And we, and we keep extending Phase One down and we get points because of the addition, because we are tying onto an existing program that they've already approved, we get extra bonus points to show the extension of the same trail. So that, you know, that's why...
Okay, but the, the extension could be included, right? You've already got this over here, you could easily come down this side.
We could go to the new elementary, you know, anything that's contiguous, as long as we're contiguous with it, we'll, we'd get those bonus points in the Tech Dot scoring system for being contiguous with the existing system.
Okay, okay.
And at the time, the school was...
Did you bring it, you don't want the selection of Dallas Street?
Didn't, because...
It was just easy, it was just a straight line?
Well, it was an extension, well, because the Phase One trail will end just south of Memorial Park, right there at Blasen Game in Dallas. And it was a straight shot there. You know, the drainage and everything on Dallas Street for that section down at Van Alstine Parkway, we could begin doing the template of, you know, what the future street would look like by making that happen.
Mr. Mayor? I have a question for Lynn. I understand, is this on? I understand the logic there tying onto Dallas Street because it continues going south. Okay?
Right.
Dallas Street dead ends and there is no connection. We're talking about connecting all the schools. What is the proposed route to connect it to this elementary school on the south end?
That, that is, that is, that's got to be determined, yes. The double corners at Heinz Street won't happen. That, that, the ultimate configuration of that route, the bike trail, will change in the future. We won't, there won't be a bike trail that has two 90s within a block of each other. It'll, it'll be continuous. You know, we, we'll, you know, going out to Kelly Road would be a perfect opportunity once we got down that far on Dallas Street if that was an, you know, if that was an opportunity. Yeah, well, I mean, everything should be available at this point.
Okay, well, I think, just my own personal opinion, I think all that needs to be lined out before we find anything. Because if we get into it all the way down to Dallas Street and then we don't have a way to finish it, we got a problem.
Right. Okay, now, now the timing on, this is to have, this is to have the city's share of the money in this year's budget if the city gets selected. I, I looked at, it has taken three years to get to the bid phase for Phase One. So it took about three or four months for Tech Dot to finally acknowledge, the award of the project, and it took three months to negotiate the advanced funding agreement, which is the contract with the city and the state. So we're talking, if we get notification before the end of the year, it'll be mid to late summer before the city asks for qualifications for the design team. Because no design team and no, no work or no money to write away, and there is, by the way, there is no right of way needed on this section of Dallas Street, but, but there, no money, any money spent does not count towards the city's share. So like in Phase One, once the AFA, the Advanced Funding Agreement, is approved, that's when the city went out and got requests for qualifications for the engineering and design teams. And before, you know, so there's a sequential order. You have to do this before the next one goes in. And that, and so we'll be, it'll be probably September before you even start designing next year on Phase Two, wherever Phase Two is. This, whatever Phase Two is. If, if we get awarded, I mean...
Hi, my name is Cheryl Snyder and I think I was excited about the bike path, just hearing the first phase. I think it's an upscale amenity for Van Alstine to have. I am concerned that there, that this is the first hearing about the additional phases that we've had in four years. And I'd like to know some, or have some assurances that will potentially, my house is at the corner of Fulton and Dallas. And potentially we have the possibility of losing six to 12 feet down the front of our house and down the side of our house. And I'd just like to know that there will be more hearings, more frequent than every four years, because I think a lot of people didn't know about this, including me. And I was surprised to know that it was this far along before having an additional public hearing. So I'd just like some assurances that we will have more input in this before it goes too much further. Thank you.
Thank you.
I may be behind because I came in a few minutes late, but what was the issue about the tax rate in 60 cents to the hundred?
We're not addressing the tax rate tonight. The only thing we're addressing is the shared use path.
Okay, so when will this part be addressed?
Will this tax rate later?
It's lighter at another, we have, we have two agendas for tonight. We haven't got through the first one yet.
Okay.
You can come back.
So, Charlotte's head.
Hi, I'm Brian Miller. I live on 462 South Dallas, so this will directly affect me at some point. First off, I would have to say I oppose from the expansion of the road. First, we want to get enough traffic down Dallas to meet that much space plus a bike path. I was kind of under the impression that the bike path would be included in fixing the road as well. It doesn't sound like the case, like this is a whole separate project, so the bike path will be in better shape than the existing road, which I'm not a fan of. And, but I just think, so for the record, I'm against the bike path coming down Dallas Street, but I would say I'm open to having a bike path because you can't even walk a stroller around on the streets right now in our neighborhood because the roads aren't in good enough shape to do so and there's nowhere to go if two cars are coming down. I have heard different options of possibly making that a one-way street, which if it was one continuous project of the street and the bike path, which they're not funding for, it's the streets, but in a perfect world, if it were one big street like it is now, half of it was a bike path, half of it was a one-way street, I think that would actually be okay because the only objections that I've heard so far is they're coming into my, into my yard. So I don't want you taking 60 out of my driveway. I, that would change a whole lot of things for me. 12 feet would, I'd probably be up there every day being your worst enemy if that were the case. So that's, that's a hell for me. But I would like something to go around, whether it's fixing streets or something to be able to walk around the neighborhood with a stroller or a bike or something. I just, I'm with everybody else that lives on Dallas Street. I just don't think that's the way to go. I mean, the only logical argument that I can even put myself into is that there's not much traffic on Dallas Street, so that would be a reason to put a bike path there. But I haven't heard that from any of the city council or that being a reason. And I don't really want to increase traffic on Dallas Street, so I wouldn't personally be against it, but I would understand that side of the argument. So I have a question about the easement. If you take the easement that I have right now, which I think is six or eight feet into my yard because our fence line stops there, if you took that, would I need, would you imminent domain another three to five feet for an additional utility easement? Because you're going to be moving telephone poles, electric boxes, water lines, all kinds of craziness. So if you came into that and took that easement, which you have the right to take if it passes without my approval, would you have to take more of my land without my consent to add the utilities and everything else to go back there? And then, oh, and I just didn't want the other, it sounds like the only other argument was the fear of losing the money from the government. So I don't want to do something that everybody's against, just in fear of losing the project. So... Oh, that's been three months, sorry?
Yes, it has. But you can go ahead and answer your question about...
For everybody on Dallas Street, if it stays on Dallas Street, there is an 80-foot platted right of way, which is city, that's city property. The houses may be, may approach upon it a little bit of it or not. That is existing city right of way and it was platted in 1890, so it's been around for 127 years. That's eighty, eighty feet. It's an 80-foot right of way down Dallas Street. It was platted with the original town section. The, the whole width of the right of way is 80 feet.
And I'll help the engineer here a little bit first. I would suggest anybody that's going to be in the path if we move forward, please go look at your property lines because I also, I am a property owner on a street that I mow it and it's halfway into the street. It's not my land. So just because I have a tree or I have grass, please go check out your property lines because you know Van Alstine. You know we're, we're going on a lot of stuff that's not ours, so please do check that out.
But, and, and on this plan right here, it shows the section. The existing street is pretty well centered and to break it down at the culvert down south of Kelly Street, it gets very narrow, but it's generally about 30 feet wide. So that leaves, so what we're planning on doing, the bike trail still leaves an 18-foot parkway, which is city right of way that is maintained and mowed by the current owners of city property right now. So there is no approach, but if there's trees in there, things like that, well, you know, that's a design issue for the design team to handle. If the tree, if it's Big Macan or Big Oak, that would be something that they would have to take in consideration and offset if that, if that were the desire of the city to do that. So yeah, the right of way, we're not taking any more right of way or driveways that isn't currently the city. There, that is not an option. We, you know, if the city, if the city needs to claim back their portion of the right of way, then that, that is a discussion that we'll have to have with the rest, or the design, the design.
My name is Patrick McHugh. I live in Georgetown. I don't know that I'm ever going to use it. I don't like exercise and informally. And I get what you say about the kids. I'm honestly not either for it or against it. My biggest concern is here and over here, people had no idea they were going to come through the property. And I mean, there's not that many people in the streets. So I mean, if it comes down knocking on doors, it's like, okay, there's 20 doors you have to knock on, let them know that you're coming through. That's all.
I'm Donnie J. Neal. Mr. Mayor, I look forward to the letter every month. That was my moment of luck out there. I've listened to a lot of it and I've listened intently and please don't tell my wife I can do that. I heard Mr. Plank a while ago talking about linking it all together and how it would be beneficial. The first time one of these trails caught my eye was when we moved into Uptown down there and we were 50 feet off Katy Trail. It was good from the social aspect. It was. My folks go back all the way almost from the land area, would it be fair to say, almost back when our cemetery belonged to Colin Kenny and it was Hog Farm back then. So I have a lot of heritage at stake here. I'm also an area realtor, that's not a blow, but I want to say that I do have future growth in this city in mind. But I've also learned, as listening to everyone, Proverbs says, write the vision down and make it plain. And there's a lot of questions here that still haven't been answered. And also, delay, that's not denial. So I don't think right now is the time to go forward with it. Right now, I feel like if you're asking me, what's my vote? Let's drop it right here. Let's talk about it a little more before we go forward with it. So to me, it would be a zero, no. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jed Anderson. I'm the, I'm certainly planning in some commission. I've heard a lot of questions, a lot of issues, and I understand that there are definitely issues for people who live on Dallas Street. I'm a big supporter of Phase One, I'm a big supporter of a bike path. To me, you have to figure out words, it makes the most sense to put it. It'd be nice to sit down tonight and draw that plan out, but we have to put some other thought into that. Unfortunately, that takes funding. About how you solve these issues and all these questions without putting into the funding behind it, coming out and getting expert opinions, getting a design team to help you come up with a preliminary plan, that's what I am in support of funding future phases, wherever they may be, solving some of these issues, communicating to the public. I don't know how you do that without some funding in the budget. So I support the funding aspect for future phases in addition to Phase One. Just one more comment. There's been a lot of talk about giving children around town and that's critically important for safety reasons. I'm associating myself with a gentleman three rows up from me who said he's not as young as he used to be and that's the thing. He'll come in time where I probably can't drive around town, I may want to walk, be on a scooter, whatever. There's a senior citizen service aspect to this as well. Wherever the bike path ends up, there's a chance I'd like to see it focused on the downtown area, getting people into downtown. That will help folks get into the pharmacy, to the library, to the senior center. I think the downtown area ultimately to hold this, but that's part of the planning aspect. Again, it takes funding to get there. Thank you.
I'm Jim. That's, I live on North Dallas Street and I think Highway Five would be a good place to implement this bike trail. Behind my house is a bar ditch, could be filled in and used. I used to try and mow it, but I don't even mow it anymore, it's too hard, too steep. But I have a big shaped tree in the front and two crape myrtles. I had nine of them, but two, most of them in the front yard. Two of them are on the city side and a big shaped tree. So if that was implemented on North Dallas, then would have to be cut down. And I'm not... And I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Womack, Commissioner of PNC, board member of CDC. And I have a grandchild that goes to the Van Alstine schools. And I would like for that person to be safe. And I am fully in favor of this bike trail. And I am fully in favor of your children being safe and their travelers doing what's good. And I think a secondary plus on this trail is maybe would take some of the vehicles off the road, I think.
Thank you.
Chris Doran, on the CDC board. I guess my biggest question, first of all, I understand the folks' concern on Dallas Street. But obviously, as Dr. Brown mentioned earlier, and Lynn mentioned earlier, the trail is not etched in stone as far as the location or path or direction even at this point in time. To me, it seems like the council has used this item as a way to balance the budget rather than concern over where the path is and how we actually make the path go or whether the path is actually a benefit to the city as we move forward. And in that particular item, I think it would be a great benefit and a great asset to the city of Dallas Street.
All right, I will close the public comment at this time.
Can I ask first, if I want my three minutes, do I do it now or do I?
No, it's open to council now. It's open for discussion by council, I believe.
Good.
So you may start.
Because I think everybody here probably wants to know as a councilman my position. So I definitely wanted to be able to give my opinion on it. I think what's at stake is what's on the agenda for right now. It's talking about $100,000 commitment to a bike path. The big question is, you know, is it for a hike and bike path or is it for other city services, roads, you know, city hall, library? I mean, those are our big questions. Or do we go and raise taxes? I would, I appreciate the school being here, and we've got a great partnership. But when you start to divide $15 million budget by 1,600 kids, they have $9,400 per person to spend. And when you divide our budget by 11, or by 3,800 people, you know, we've got $1,000, we've got $1,100 to spend per person. We don't have that much money to do a lot of the nice things where our kids would like to. So right now, personally, I feel like I contribute a lot to the school already. I think that, you know, access, I think the other comment about access. I would love to have a nice place to walk around in town. That means that we would have to have sidewalks. We'd have to have safe areas to cross streets, and we don't have any of those. So I think actually everyone that might be on a bike path should be clamoring to get it because you're going to have the concrete sidewalks that we won't have, the rest of us. I live across the street from Jim, and I don't know how I get over to the bike path because it would be mighty dangerous, and there aren't sidewalks. So I really, once again, my thing is balancing the question. And I appreciate everybody coming and giving their opinion because to me, this is the power of government, is when everybody actually comes and shares, unfortunately, we all come to it. It's going to be a winner or loser, you know. But we've got to come to a decision on this. But I do think we have to weigh, is it $100,000 for a bike path? Or do we feel that we need to put that towards other city services? Or are you okay with let's raise, let's raise our taxes and let's go ahead and pay more for it? So that's kind of what I'm weighing tonight on my children.
Oh, we want to order? We don't have to.
You don't even have to talk.
The motion is to remove it from the budget.
And talk about it later.
Correct. But it just says the budget for 2016, 2017.
2017, I think.
Is that wording going to include Phase One?
No.
That did not include Phase One?
It's not in it. Phase One is already.
But we do have costs for Phase One, correct?
Yeah, but that's already finished.
Correct, okay.
This is for what is not in.
So this is for Phase Two. So one of the questions that came up was the $100,000. And I know we're moving from, we're getting off into the budget, which is the next meeting. The $100,000, if we earmark it for the next use of transportation, supercar, bike truck, but we don't get selected, does the $100,000 get spent?
That would be up to the council.
It would be in the budget.
You're asking me about the $100,000?
Yeah, there's, well, people are concerned about the $100,000. And I know when we pay, we go to the dance first. We pay all of the money upfront, right?
Yes, sir.
It's like paying, it's like paying your deductible. We're paying the deductible, and then after that, the federal government, state government come in after that. So we've submitted the application. Lynn, I'm sure you've incurred a few engineering costs for submitting the application for Phase Two, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But that $100,000, that's for after the selection, correct?
Yes.
So if the $100,000 is in our budget and we don't get selected, it just moves someplace else, correct?
The $100,000, since CDC and EDC have not included it into their budget, should the city council elect to remove funding for this project for 2018 budget, the Parks Department Contract Services expense account, 10-555-6703, will be reduced by $100,000. Also, the Parks Department miscellaneous revenue account, 10-555-5499, will be reduced by $100,000. So there will be no change in the available funds and does not introduce a savings in the general fund.
But it will make our overall budget less.
No, ma'am, it will not.
So then it won't, it won't change because it's, because it's coming from another budget?
What other budget?
It's coming from Parks, right? Parks, EDC, CDC.
It's in Parks, revenue, money in, money out.
So it doesn't change our budget?
It has no effect on the budget.
It's $100,000.
But CDC, CDC would get to keep the money. They wouldn't be spending anything. It's not in EDC. CDC. They're the only ones that still have it in the budget. So they're the only organization that would have a savings.
So it doesn't change our budget? It doesn't, bounce budget doesn't?
Can everyone hear?
I'm trying to understand that.
Say it again?
I'm trying to understand that. So what you're saying is, you don't spend the money, the money doesn't go anywhere else?
No, it doesn't change.
Where does the funds come from that cover it?
Again, since CDC and EDC did not elect to include it in their budget, it is money in, money out. There's no effect on the general fund budget.
Okay, you're still not answering my question. Where is the $100,000 that was covering our $100,000 engineering cost? Where does that come from? We had an expenditure for engineering for 100, right?
A budget.
And contract services.
And contract services, and yes, that is already paid.
For the bike path?
For Phase One, yes.
For Phase One? Phase One only. Phase One only is in the 2017, 2018?
Phase Two has not been awarded. Phase Two has no cost associated with it currently. The preliminary engineering that has been done has been paid this year.
So the $100,000 that's in the engineering contract services is just a continuation of paying for Phase One?
$100,000 has it. Of course, you have the Parks Master Plan, and that is expected to be, that's expected to be paid. That is something that has been approved.
I don't understand how the Parks Master Plan just came into this conversation. It's separate.
If you're looking at the overall numbers.
I'm looking at a $100,000 bill for engineering services that I thought went with the bike path. Thank you very much.
That's exactly what I said. Yes, ma'am.
So it's already paid?
It's for Phase One or Phase Two? I don't like this.
Phase One. Phase Two is for this year. Phase Two has not been awarded. There isn't any money to be expended in '18. It's an anticipated expenditure.
What is the $100,000 line item in the budget we are reviewing? What does that attach to Phase One?
Phase Two.
So the $100,000 engineering line item in the budget we are reviewing goes to Phase Two. Okay. Now, you told me there was some corresponding incoming amount that would make that a wash. Where is that $100,000 coming from?
The $100,000 coming in? CDC and EDC did not elect to include it in their budget.
So where does it come, where does it come in our budget? I think that's what she's asking.
Where does the revenue come in?
Yes, ma'am. Is that just from taxes and, does that, does that include, that $100,000 for engineering in our 2017, 2018 budget? That comes from our revenue. But does that $100,000 just for bike path? Or does it cover LANS and engineering's other costs?
Engineering cost is what we've been paying. We've been paying on the preliminary work for Phase One until the end of this year. Phase Two is for next year.
Correct.
That's in the budget. We just established that. That $100,000 in the budget we're reviewing tonight is for Phase Two. We got that part. I thought you were saying it would be a wash somehow. And I don't understand how it becomes a wash.
It is.
And that's what I'm trying to say.
Also, the Parks miscellaneous revenue account, 10-555-499, which would be the money invoiced to CDC and EDC.
There we go. So the Parks Board is going to invoice CDC, EDC for the corresponding $100,000 to cover. Okay, if they do not have it in their budget, we will be stuck with that $100,000. So it still is coming out of our expenditures if CDC and EDC do not cover.
That is true.
There we go. Okay. It's still in our budget. We're just hoping somebody else is going to pay for it. Okay, thank you. So the point is still there, but it passes on. Yep, I'm glad you did it because I didn't understand it.
So, all right. So, but that $100,000 is earmarked there? If we don't get awarded, that would get spent?
Exactly. And as Lynn stated, it's typically a three-year process.
Correct.
This is strictly a contingency. If it was awarded and council did elect to pay for it as well as requesting EDC and CDC to participate, then that could occur.
Okay.
We wouldn't have the option not to utilize it too. Would it get absorbed into any other expenditure or stay there? And we get absorbed by whatever overages and other accounts?
All right. So it's $100,000 continuation. Okay. And then, I'll just move on to the next one. The, being the, being the roads guy, the roads and sidewalks and utilities guy, I said that when I first started to stay on the Met Gala and introduce myself. I understand people don't want to enter the audience, but they want, they would mind it someplace else. I understand the safety aspect of it because my son rides his bike all over town. You see him messing up. So I have no, I can see it. But one thing that weighs on me the most is we don't have the funds to fix every street. We don't have the funds to put all our storm drainages underground. We don't, we just, as a city, we don't like that much. To use federal funds and state funds to assist us in that matter, I think is, I think it's prudent. I think it's a wise choice. And it doesn't have to go down Dallas Street. It can go anywhere. There's, I'm sure there's other places that we can, we can run with this thing. It doesn't have to be that long. It doesn't have to go in seven sections. It doesn't have to go in 18 sections. We can work with it as long as we can. We only have to build what we can afford. Which goes back to $100,000 as a placeholder. We don't usually spend on some of those. So, but the return is even more so than that. And it gets things, and it gets things fixed where we need it. Me being me, I don't know why we wouldn't put it, why we would put it down Dallas Street. I'd go, so you go right down, right down middle town. But that's just me being me. The, so I see the ancillary benefits. I look at road profiles. I see drainage, I see drainage elevations and water elevations. I see them tucked underneath the curb, which believe it exists, young man thought of, or you can tear up my fence and put phone lines in. To get our roads where we want, I've had enough emails from people saying, how do we get our roads fixed while we're spending money on this? When we get our roads fixed? But I also see this as a gateway to get the funds to fix our roads with a plus. To me, it's not about the bike path so much. That's what I get, what we get, what the city gets, what the businesses get, what people moving into town get, what the school gets when we do put that drainage that runs down Kelly Lane and out in that cornfield underground. So me, strictly what's underground and the actual repair of the roads in the process of doing this, which would be lumped up in that cost, correct? So, I mean, it is straight. We're fixing to go, if we go for this park right here and we tear up that road, repairing that road, repairing that grass, putting an irrigation system in for the grass that's in that park would be considered part of the bike path, would it not?
If that's Phase One and that is not included in, we are adjusting the road. We're not putting a new irrigation system with the road because there is not one out there.
Okay. No, I just think, I see the, I see the opportunity for things underneath the infrastructure. I don't mind $100,000. It's a, it's a cheap place to go.
But that does, you consider, because the second part of what we're going to talk about then is raising the tax rate to cover that.
Yeah, but that's a good one.
Okay. We'll talk later then.
Okay, I want to say something. The public comment period is adding in. That's all right, sir. I don't want you to feel bad, but it is adding in. Now, if one of the councilmen in making their comments has questions for anyone out there, then they can ask them, and of course, you can respond. Go ahead.
Okay. Angie, you probably guess this has been a very much discussed issue both sides for the last couple of weeks. And, you know, hindsight being 2020, these issues should have been discussed back in 2013, 2014, when this was first proposed. And, you know, the people have asked the question, when was this, when was there a public hearing? And, you know, the people have asked the question, "When was there a public hearing?" And, you know, I came on the council in 2014. I was attending the meetings back in 2013, and I can vaguely remember public hearings being announced on the hiking bike trail. But that's all that was said on the agenda. People on Dallas Street didn't know that a phase was coming through their neighborhood. They knew that it was going to connect the schools. That's all that was, that's all that was said. And yes, there's maps up here, and council people had seen the maps. The city staff has seen the maps. But the average citizen hadn't seen the maps. So what I would propose, we've already got Phase One is already funded. Is that correct? Okay. We follow through with Phase One. That's going to connect the three schools to the North Park, to whatever, Van Alstine Park. What is that, how far it goes?
No, it just comes to Dallas.
Comes to the park. The three, the middle school, the high school, and the new elementary are already going to be connected with Phase One. I suggest, as Lynn said, we've got, you know, it could be one year, it could be three years before anything, any information was coming to us as to what kind of funding or anything is going to be coming towards us. We use that fund to determine an alternative to Dallas that is going to connect to the other elementary school. And I don't think any funding should happen until we've got a plan. Right now, we don't have a plan. We've got a, we've got a drawing up there. But the question I'd asked before, "How does it connect to the elementary school?", we don't have an answer. So I don't think we need to be throwing money at that until we have an answer, at least. You know, it's not a, not an answer, maybe not an answer to give to Tech dot or to the federal government, but we need to know within ourselves what we're going to be doing with this thing. Otherwise, you know, we develop it, Phase Two down there down Dallas Street, and we can't find an answer, then these people have been displaced. Their yard's torn up. They've got a walking path there twelve feet wide going through their yard. But what good is that going to do? Because it doesn't connect down there to that other elementary school, which is the ultimate goal of this stuff. So my recommendation would be, right now, is we follow through with Phase One, and we put this other on hold until we've got a plan. So if it means taking out of the budget, then we take it out of the budget. And if it does come up, that we do have a plan, that we come up with it, that the funding thing comes up sooner than expected, then I think we can come back to council and we can amend our budget. So again, that's going to take a lot of thought. It's going to take a lot of, you know...
Participation.
Participation. And that's, that's the other point that I was going to make. Back in, when this first came up, I understand this isn't a planning and zoning issue, but these people on Dallas Street are affected just as if there was a zoning change in their neighborhood. Anybody within two hundred feet of this hiking bike trail should be notified that this could be coming through their property. And we're going to have a public hearing about it, and we're going to talk about it, and they're going to be able to tell us whether they approve or disapprove of it. And we do it through that process so that everybody's on the same page. Everybody knows what could be coming, what is coming, or whatever. And everybody's involved in the decision. So, you know, I think we've got an opportunity to start that right now. We've got a little bit of time before we hear from the government as far as the money issue. And I suggest that we, as the council, and the CDC, and the EDC, and the Parks, and the citizens, we all get together and we come up with a plan. That's my recommendation.
Now, that, any planning that we do, is it going to require some participation by our engineers?
Certainly, sir. It's going to require participation from the engineers.
All right. And that's going to require some funding, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And that hundred thousand dollars, a part of it could go toward that?
It could, if council elects to.
Okay.
And if council wants to have public hearings, we can have public hearings.
Awesome. Um... And for the application to the public, you know, anybody on this council can put an agenda item on. They don't just get on there by magic or by chance. We have to put them on deliberately. And I can tell you that we do need more public hearings. I think that's apparent. I think everybody on council will agree with that. But as far as that money, the money that's in the budget, I think it should stay there so that we can use it and do the planning that we need to do. And if we need to avoid Dallas Street, then, you know, that's what council needs to talk about, with our engineer. But the planning is going to be essential, and we have to be able to fund it.
Thank you.
I really would like to make one thing very clear. I'm chairman, I'm also chairman of the Parks Board. The Parks Board didn't have a say in this. We're still waiting to see how the park is done. And, you know, when you say, "Okay, Phase One's fine", but we don't have a plan for North Park. So if they're going to go ahead and put that through, and that's why they went on down Highway Five, but it wasn't brought before the Parks Board for approval, and you look at all their minutes, and it wasn't. We do, it is presented to us now, but it wasn't for the last three years or so. And so it does come out of, it does show in the Parks Board budget, but it's not a budget. That is a budget that is made by the Department of Public Works. I, my view on this, and I am the one that put this agenda item on here, because there are so many variables to this. We don't know what we're funding. He did say it was Dallas Street, and it's, of course, it's had its name changed several times. It originally was, it was going to be a third for the CDC, a third for the EDC, and a third for the city. Now, it's not in any budget but the city, so the hundred thousand falls on us. I am old school. I think all of our money should be spared on necessities. I'm sorry. But we have so many things that we need in Van Alstine that we are not getting and that need to be funded and that our money needs to be spent for. And you're going to see that when we get to the budget. So it is my belief that we do take this and take it off, take the items in the budget off of this. But if you'll notice, it is also that this shared use path project be brought back to council for reevaluation at a later date. I really am not for funding something that has not, that is, that's got so many variables. Well, we're going to spend this money, but it doesn't have to be for this, or it doesn't have to do for that, or we can do it this way, or we can do it... I really want to know, before I spend that money, what it's going to be spent on and where, and that the public knows about it long before it's done. So this does not involve Phase One. But I think from here on out, we should remove it, and we should talk about it, and we should reevaluate it, and know what we're going to do with it before we do it. Thank you for listening.
Can y'all hear me? Vaguely, but a little closer. So just to clarify, as far as spending money goes, no money's going to actually be physically spent until there's actual engineering, there's award and grant, correct?
Yes, sir. Just like Phase One, it comes to council before anything is done. Phase Two, to send it to Tech dot for award, came to council. For the path, the total path, all phases, all six phases, came to council. Every bit of this comes to council. Nothing has been done in the shadows. It all comes to council.
Okay. So nothing, nothing is going to be spent until there's some physical engineering, until there's a physical grant award?
No, sir. No, without council approval.
And just to clarify what Lynn said, this project and this opportunity comes around every three years?
Well, this is the second time, this is the second one in three years it has come up. It was two thousand and eight or seven prior to that, so there was a six-year gap prior, so...
So a six-year gap prior, okay. Um... So I think there is a lot of benefit to having this program. There's obviously some logistical concerns, and appreciate everybody that came and spoke today and that brought those concerns. This is the most participation that we've had in quite some time. So thank you so much for everybody, folks on Dallas Drive, that decided to come today and get your voices heard. We sincerely appreciate that. The project as a whole is about community connectivity. When you look at Van Alstine on a map, you almost look like you have different hubs, different little areas. You have the main part of downtown, but then off to the northwest corner, you have this little strip called Graywood. Then you look on the south part, and you have this cluster of homes called Georgetown. And then off east of that, east of Highway Five, you have this standalone metal buildings that we call the industrial park. And the whole idea of this project is to get community connectivity, to ensure that folks, uh... And I hear, and I'm sure some of you guys hear, that there's a little back and forth between Old Town, Georgetown, all these different things. And I think anything that we can do to move towards a united Van Alstine, anything that we can do to connect that is a very positive thing for the city. As far as the timing of what we're looking at on this, on this project, so we're over a year out on having to have a firm route. Is that correct?
It could be up to a year, yes.
Up to a year. What have we seen as far as this past phase on that? What was the timeframe on awarding?
Okay. Yeah, I pulled a timeline up on Phase One, just if anybody asked that question. We were notified of the award, um... In late December of twenty fifteen. Uh, the, and the application went in September. So there was a three-month lag between the back and the award. Uh, it was March of sixteen, three months later, before there was actually a kickoff meeting with Tech dot. And it was June of sixteen when the council and Tech dot approved the request for qualifications for the design team. Uh, it was August of sixteen before the AFA was signed, which is the official kickoff, and city could start spending money. So from September, it was about eleven months before, when we got notice of the award, or the notice of the application. It was nine months before we actually started spending money.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's become apparently clear during this whole process that, and I'm hearing this sentiment echoed across this table, that we value your input, and we need to seek it more often. And given the timeframe that we have to firm down the path of this new phase of the shared use path, I think we can set up some public hearings between now and then. I think we can gather some input. Maybe, maybe an exercise that can be done is to actually flag off Dallas, have Public Works flag off that what is up here on this map behind Mr. Atchison? And so we can physically see what that would look like in people's yards. Okay, we don't like that, but then let's, let's look at other options. But this gives us plenty of time to explore those options. And I think us turning this funds down now to play off of Mr. Thomas's point with denying substantially cheaper infrastructure, because that's what a lot of us care about. We're denying substantially cheaper curving, or gutter, uh, for citizens on some road. So I think we can have plenty of time to be able to decide a more appropriate route if Dallas indeed does not work.
Is there a motion to remove all items from the twenty seventeen dash twenty eighteen Van Alstine budget regarding the shared use path in parentheses, also known as the Van Alstine Bicycle Trail? And that this shared use path project be brought back to council for reevaluation at a later date?
I make a motion.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are you going to discuss among council?
Uh, yeah, I want clarification. So this is removing, this is the removing of just the funds, just the funds in the budget for Phase Two. This is, has nothing to do with Phase One?
Right. Correct. And it's far reevaluation later.
And it says we still want to talk about it.
Right.
It's not dead.
It's removing the funds.
Just remove the funds.
Anything further? All right. All in favor of removing these items regarding the shared use path in twenty seventeen, twenty fifteen budget?
And bringing it back later.
And bringing it back later. We got three in favor, all opposed. We have two opposed. And so the motion to remove the items from the budget carries. All right. And the next thing then, on this agenda, is adjournment.
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Is there anyone opposed? No one opposed?
No.
Okay. No, no one opposed. And so the time is seven twenty-six PM. This is a special call.
Hey, y'all. Hey, Ripley.
All right. The time is seven twenty-six PM. We're going to call a second, quicker, uh, for the order. Uh, and item number two is conduct a public hearing to hear comments for or against the proposed twenty seventeen tax rate of zero point six six three one nine eight per one hundred dollars of value in fiscal year twenty seventeen dash twenty eighteen budget for the city of Van Alstine. Um, and, uh, now, there are numerous segments, of course, to this, to this budget. However, we have some folks that want to talk about the library. I have a list of four names, and we may need to pass the microphone back for some of these, if someone would mind, or I can come grab it and pass it around. Mr. Tom Hines?
Just a second, I'll get that.
So before he, before he states, this is, uh, this, item two is his comments against the pro- uh, pardon, the proposed tax rate and the budget also. Right? That is correct.
Yes.
Yes. So we're doing the budget and the tax rate, sign this draft.
Thanks, everyone. My name is Tom Hines. I've been a patron of the library for forty years. And I just like to pitch a better review of it. And so I've been told that there's some just attractive people who think maybe the budget needs to be passed. And I would say, "Well, if the director of the library tells me that they need two additional staff, I tend to believe her." You know, so, so I would just like to say that the library is a jewel that you don't want to ask with here in Van Alstine. And I guess that's about it.
Thank you, sir. All right. The next thing I have is Shirley Hines. Just a second.
My head's so full of the mic pad, I don't even know if I can concentrate on this. I am going to read it. I have been associated with the Van Alstine Library through friends of the library for thirty-one years, and on its board for half of those years. Our library started with two rooms above City Hall in the nineteen sixties, and has progressed over the years to an eight thousand... over the years to an 8,000-square-feet building thanks to the governing body of our city, Friends of the Library, and the people who support our events. It is one of the most visited places in the city. At the library, there are current and past newspapers to read, thousands of books to check out, DVDs to view, a genealogy section, and a large number of computers. There's children's story hour for the very young, teen activities, and the summer children's programs with a special event which had its best-attended year ever this summer. We get a significant amount of citizens from Anna attending our library because they do not have one of their own. Judy contacts authors who come to our library and review their books and talk about the experience of writing. She was working with youth programs at the library for 14 years before becoming the head librarian. She needs a full staff to execute the tasks that need to be performed for the library to be at its best. We have one of the best libraries in North Texas for our population, and because Van Alstine is increasing in population rapidly, the library needs to grow with it. That takes our full support, both monetary and attendance. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vicki Cuban, and I am a current member of the Van Alstine Public Library Board. When you go into a museum, you can look at history, you can see how things were, and discover knowledge about the past. When you go into a library, you can look at history, read history, feel history, share history, and be in it too. The same analogy can be shared with the present and the future. Can you imagine standing right beside Davy Crockett as the last shot was fired at the Elmo? Can you imagine what it would be like to put yourself on a huge machine that built our interstate systems, our pipelines, watch our crops be planted, grow, and get from farm to market? In the future, it's already laid out before us by writers who imagined what the universe was like hundreds of years ago. They wrote it down, and now when we read about it, we can almost complete the story ourselves because we are living what they wrote about. In our library, there are 6,359 fiction and nonfiction books for kids. Children from two-year-olds to teens laugh, play, learn to read, and learn socialization skills in the bright newly remodeled kids section of the building. The mural in the teen section will soon be featured in an unveiling and will be the pride of Van Alstine. Our library provides free access to over 24,000 print and digital resources. Patrons have access to over 60 tech-share databases, ranging from legal forms to test-prep modules and much, much more. The total collection of books at the present time is 24,730. Did you know that the largest group in the United States who use the library systems are young couples and young families? People with children use the library to teach social skills and reasoning skills such as picking out books and being responsible for them. One area in which our Van Alstine library excels are the well-attended monthly family-oriented activities. These activities, which more than once a year have had to be moved to the community center because they are so popular, happen because of the tenacity of our director and her educated and caring staff. We have 16 desktop PCs with broadband internet, fast uploads and downloads, and all are equipped with a full suite of Microsoft Office products, audio and image editing, Google Earth, and two browsers. There is access to the Van Alstine Library on microfilm dating clear back to the late 1800s. There are three daily newspapers, a digital microfilm reader and printers, magazine die-cut machine, digitized Van Alstine year books online and on CD. A wide variety of CDs with audio and video, fiction and nonfiction fill up several shelves. Large print books, paperbacks, mysteries, westerns round out our endless choices for the community to access free of charge. The genealogy section is one of the most up-to-date and complete in the area, including an obituary credit in, I'm sorry, obituary card index. If you are curious about Uncle John or Aunt Sarah, you might be surprised to find out what happened in your family's past. And again, you might not want to know, but that information is available to patrons for to access. As old-fashioned as brick-and-mortar buildings full of books might seem in our modern ultra-bus busy lives, sit down with a book, turn the pages, and enjoy the anticipation of what might be on the next page and in the next chapter. Last month, the door count was 2,054 people in our library. Our public library is rounded out with modern media, copy machines, and access to all the things you can reach on your cell phone or iPads. But when it comes to waiting, when it comes to wanting to gain knowledge, or just enjoy a vacation on the beach, or travel to another country, getting involved with a series of romance or mysteries, conquering the Old West, or conquering space, doesn't a comfortable chair, a cup of coffee, and the smell and feel of shelves and shelves of books sound more appealing than holding a five-by-seven piece of plastic equipment in your hand? Thank you very much, and please give the library the funding needed to keep it a vital part of our community.
And Ms. Monica Herrera?
I moved here to Van Alstine about eight years ago, and as you can clearly hear, my English is not my first language, which I am so grateful for public library because that's how I've been learning it, through the ESL teachers that volunteer there. And because I have two kids, I have always given my kids love books, and I have always used the help of libraries. I would take them to summer camps that they had every single activity on Wednesdays and since they were very little. My kids are teenagers right now, and we just happened to cancel our internet at home because we don't get a good signal. And over the summer, my freshman daughter had two projects before school starts, and she has been using the public library for that. If that hadn't been for the library, my daughter wouldn't have any opportunity to turn her homework whenever she goes back to school. And I love the fact that people think that the library can run on volunteers. I have been a volunteer myself, but honestly, you cannot run a place like that with volunteers because I don't know if some of you have been helping there or working there. It is a lot of work, and that's something that I would like to go and just help for a few hours, but I would not like to be there all day organizing books and everything that takes, all that work that takes to run a library. And I think for that, I will support the librarian and whoever works there. I will give them my full support. If I'm against whatever is, I don't know, too close or to run that place with volunteers. Thank you.
This is the public hearing section. Does anyone else have any comments from the crowd?
It's just on the library?
No, this is on the entire button.
This is on the, we have some people here in the front row and in the council room is Blake's turn.
My name is Bill Plake, and I'm in Georgetown. I also appreciate the library greatly. I had my grandsons up there with me this summer, and they showed up every Monday, so Monday, I mean, Monday at 10:30 in the morning, where they'd come out here and meet horses, miniature horses, all kinds of animals, hold a bunny, and all kinds of things like that the library put on. And it was a really great facility, it was a great, great effort, cost nothing to the people who come to it. And I'm sure there are a lot of people here that weren't from Van Alstine, came in from other towns and saw what kind of town Van Alstine was. Also, the reason I'm speaking sort of on this is, and I planned on it even before the library people all showed up, was that at the last council, not council meeting, a workshop meeting I went to, there was reference made to what kind of town we were going to have to learn to be, you know, to be used to having. We were no longer, not considered to be a first-class town. We were not high on the list. We were like a third or fourth-class town, and we needed to start accepting things and turning ourselves into that kind of a group, so that we could pay less money and that kind of stuff. Well, I don't believe that. I don't think, I think we should all battle to make this a first-class town, to do everything we can do, and first-class employees and that kind of stuff. Also, I wanted to discuss the tax rate a little bit. I think there's three proposals on tax rates, a rollback rate, and a, what do they call it, effective rate, and then there's another one. Anyway, I understood from the meeting the other night, from the workstation, that if you make too low of a rate for your taxes, then if you come along next year and discover that you didn't have enough money in your budget, so you have to raise your tax rate, then the state comes back in and tells you how much you can raise it by, and you can't raise it what you need particularly. You have to go by their control because you gave, basically, when you cut back your rate, you told them, you know, that's good and fine, you don't need the money, so next year we'll make sure you, it's like, I think I was talking to somebody else about it, and they said it's like a federal agency. If you didn't spend all the money in your budget this year, you don't get any money in your budget next year. You got to spend it whether you need to or not, and stuff. So, you know, make sure you pass and give us enough money in the budget to do the things that need to be done, to take care of the project that need to be taken care of. Mostly, a lot of the people that you're trying to protect, the senior citizens and that, and the on-fixed incomes, everybody says, well, they can't afford to have their taxes raised. They don't get their taxes raised. I'm a senior citizen. I don't get my taxes raised, no matter what appraisal value comes up, or no matter what you make a tax rate to be, because I'm a senior citizen, and I get a right to not have it done. So, you know, help the people who really need it, because the main thing that I've discovered, that I need the services. I need the ability for your fire department, for your ambulance service to come out to my house. They've been to my house with my wife and with me, and it's good that, I mean, they're very professional, very good employees, they treat you right, they take care of you. A policeman shows up just to make sure that, you know, anything needs to be done, but he can help with, he's there too as well. So, you know, we've got a great people, a great bunch of people taking care of us. We need to make sure we fund our budget enough to where we can think to take care of us, that they still have, that we can benefit from that. Thank you.
All right, I will not assume that your signs say it all, but I don't know if the camera's seen them, and I don't know if the folks behind you have seen them.
This, in case the mayor forgot, this is the team council for the Van Alstine Library, and I have been on, I was on the board in the past, and I want you to know that the support group for our Van Alstine Library is surpassed by none. They have the Friends of the Library, who help them financially and serve good food once a month, but they also have the team council, and they provide this council for our teenagers, they have something to do, and they are here to support the library, and we bless them, and that we really appreciate.
And if you think it's here, if they haven't seen your sign in the camera yet, if you wouldn't mind showing the camera?
Oh, okay. Oh, gosh.
Does anyone have anything to say?
Being a shy person and a really big reader, being able to go to the team council and hang out with people even though I can barely get myself to talk, really helped me make friends, and it's really, I just can't talk to people very easily. It's actually really hard for me to talk right here, but, and spending, buying books is really expensive, and some people just can't buy the books they need to study or just read, just to read. And the library gives it for free as, for the community, and I think that's amazing.
Well, I'm not telling people that you're a natural, Mike. Keep your politician.
Well, I'm not originally from here. I'm from the next town over, which is Howe, and I think it's, this library is a good place to connect with people from other towns and other places, connecting with people your age like us, like we connect very well. He's the newest one in our little group that we have, and he's opened up pretty well. I came here last year, and I say that I'm open up pretty well, and I really, like, I like to call this town my town too, even though I'm not from here.
Well, I moved to this town about a year ago from Oklahoma, and the library was a good place for me to make friends and be with people that understood me and didn't care about anything, were just good people. And during school, since we moved in such a hurry and everything, we don't have any internet, so I go up to the library a lot. Over the summer, I had a math project, and I went up there about once or twice a week, and I worked on my math, and yesterday I got it done, thanks to the computers and the access that I had at the library. I'm just really proud of the teens and everything that they've done, really proud of this group, and they're right, all of them have really changed into young adults. I see that every day as they move forward, it's great.
Are there any more comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Not the library. My name is Paul Curly. I've lived in, in and around in about Van Alstine since 1977, and I've lived in quite a few houses around town, not because I was run out or anything, I just took time to move. Anyway, the conversation lasted, the last meeting about the budget wore everybody out, and I think if the budget could be simplified, a whole lot more people would get an idea of exactly what we're trying to do with the city. One of the areas that I feel should be better identified is the area of salaries. I'd like to see those salaries defined by department head. I don't care about the individual hourly employees or anything like that, but we need to have a better idea of where this money is going, and then also in the budget should include if there's any salary increases or bonuses or anything like that is included in that math number in the budget. Really like to see more clarification in that area. The other thing is kind of going between two subjects, and that is this, the funding for the bike path. That budget is coming out of the economic development. I was on EDC for several years, and we were, in no way could we legalize that use of that money to go to a bicycle path. I know that language has been changed, it's called something use pass now and so on, but I question if the EDC money, which is supposed to be used to develop the economics in this town, if it should be used for something like a bike path. Thank you.
Can I make a reply to Mr. Curly, please?
Certainly.
I thank you for your comments, and I certainly agree with you. I do realize that salaries, I believe I'm correct in that they're up 144,000 this year, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Yes, and I do think that you have an excellent idea. I also would like to have them broken down more than they are in our budget. Thank you for those comments.
I know y'all are about to go on to the budget maybe, and always, and I know this is part of it, but I came to support the library also. My name is Judy Smith. I'm here to support for generations. My mother said, would you please go? She's about to turn 84-years-old. She's read every large print book in that library just about, and since she started reading again, and daddy hates when she comes home with the books because that's where she is for a whole day. But it has been a blessing for our family. Our neighbor was Pearl Edwards Burger, bless her heart, and I know- And I know her heart, she worked for the library. And I'm, my two, I'm not old Van Oosteen, but I'm old, and I've been a Van Oosteen for 32 years, so please let it be all Van Oosteen. But this year, I got the pleasure of experiencing with my two-year-old grandpa, or Tom and I had the privilege of babysitting last year. And the, thank you, and I'm sorry I didn't do a letter to that. It's, I've thought about it several times. But let me tell you something. If you hadn't been in there with the hokey-cokey, the bubbles, and the two books, and your two-year-old sent, this is the day to go to the library, you know, it just blesses your heart. And I have to feel like, when those kids get that feel for the book, the reading, how exciting it is, that just helps get them to step ahead. Hopefully, when they get to school and they have that love and that pleasure of reading, they'll be better students. And I feel like then their testing and all that, as they go along, will be improved. And of course, we all benefit when the school tests well and does well, because then everybody wants to count where your schools are good. But I just enjoyed it so much. And if you, I've never been in there, but I haven't seen everybody busy doing something. But if the council ever gets time to go in there with those 25, well, it was a few times, two-year-olds, three-year-olds, and watch them in action, it's very, it's very heartwarming and exciting. I fought the crowd over here for the summer program, which they just couldn't wait to go to. Backed out to the door for several of them, and they just did an excellent job. And I'm sorry I haven't told you thank you myself or put it in the paper, so people will know. But if, and I'm not sure what the, how you'll come out of the budget, but please be sure and fund them as they need to be funded, because I remember when it was too late, and it's a great place to be right now. And I would really appreciate if y'all would fund them. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? We have one up here.
I have a question about the budget. And that is, is there a salary increase for the city manager in this budget? And if so, how much is it?
Nina has no idea. It's not broken down into which ones what. That's a question for Mr. Curly.
Okay, so...
To answer your question, as stated in the budget presentation last week, it's the same as all other employees, it's 3%.
So you are getting a 3% raise?
That's what was proposed, as well as all other employees.
Thank you.
Okay, asked and answered. Thank you, ma'am. Are there any others? Okay, I see no hands. And so, after 7:52 PM, we will close the public hearing and convene the open meeting, which is for discussion among council and the budgeters. But of course, you're welcome to stay if you like.
This is a discussion and action regarding the property tax only, right?
Yes, property tax, and we're to take a record vote. We have a lot of table talks going on. I don't know if anyone here cares to kick off the meeting. I'm not going to.
What to say? I'm sorry.
Does anyone, does anyone among the council have comments, questions at this time?
Okay, I guess I have a couple, since I called everybody that cares about the library coming, all right? I would at least tell everybody, I hope asking the questions not always perceived as a negative, not a good education. I would think that it also allows people, I hope the library also takes into account that there is that perception out there. I don't think I'm probably on my own, not understanding what a library is anymore. But I definitely got an earful tonight about the library. But I never had any intention of cutting anything. So, I was just like, I'm asking questions for every department. So I hope people appreciate that I didn't just ask questions about the library. So, I got an earful about the library.
I think it was great that people came. I just learned, I don't know if I'm supposed to tell this or not, but he did not even know the library had a team council. So, we, several, I used to be on the library board, I was their secretary. So, I'm a niche ahead of them. But it was so educational, so I guess we'd better thank you.
For getting everybody wrong and... Well, it had disbanded for a little while, I believe, right? Team council?
No, we moved from team council into, the formal name is Anime Club and Fantasy Club.
Okay, okay.
My daughter was a part of that, so I knew it was not like... She was a team council for, she was still with the team council from 13 to 18, so...
I will ask the...
Oh, was it a couple?
No, I will ask one additional question, now that I've learned a lot more about the technology that's provided there. In the quote, I believe, for the IT facility, and I'm going to look both the ways, I believe I saw that the technology for the library is not covered for maintenance and support?
That's correct. The library elected to, they have their own IT in-house.
They do?
They did.
IT too?
So, that person's since left the library. Currently have a volunteer that is taking care of their IT issues. So, library IT is not addressed.
That one with your whole new system, that was going to be right. While that, did you get a few...
No-Nonsense Ranch donated 10 computers to us about five, maybe six years ago.
Right.
And we kept them up and running with, well, here he is, is the IT person. And he was a desk clerk that did IT for us. I didn't have an IT position. I had a desk clerk position, or a front desk position open. And he happened to bring along with him, very fortunately for all of us, quite a prodigious IT skills. And so, we absolutely took advantage of that.
But he's not with you anymore. Do you have the right IT that you need for the amount of people you have here? Do you have the IT you need? I mean, five or six-year-old machines, that's really old.
It is, and they are aging. We've been fortunate at...
That's kind. That's not aging, that's like, bound anger.
It's, yeah, the volunteer, I have to thank Vicky Cupid for that. He actually showed up at a KABAD meeting, asking, you know, "Does anybody need any help with IT?" Vicky got his name, and then when I had a dire need, he stepped right in. To answer your question, probably not. But we're living long and doing okay right now. George and I handle all the updates and shoulder that burden. He comes in when we have something that we can't handle on our own.
Okay. I mean, I think, I take it apart what Mr. Curly said too. I think it's the simplicity of understanding the budget. The services you get, once again, I learned that I get some services in the library, and balancing that with, you know, if those services are really wanted by the community, then we should be talking about funding them. I mean, obviously, we've got EMS and all our emergency services. I mean, I think they're always going to be at the top of the stack. I think my problem is, is I consider administration to work towards the bottom, so... That's the balance for the session.
I have, I have a question. I know your IT man, and I know he's a volunteer, but I know he is very, very good. He's not only a good IT man, he's a good teacher. I also question this because when he goes to work full-time, you will, you might no longer have an IT man. And since he's just a volunteer, and if the time comes when he can no longer volunteer, what preparation have you made for those computers?
The short answer is that we have a couple of other names that I can call for help. And so, I have those people to call upon.
It does concern me, you know, that you down there. And what does the city use? Does the city have an IT man? Who services the city?
GCC is currently our IT provider. Have two individuals from GCCIT to answer any technical questions you may have.
Madam, if it's, if it's the city's, is the library, does the library not fall under that?
Yes, ma'am. I answered the question earlier with, they had an employee that was handling the IT.
Yes.
He has since left. They've supplemented with a volunteer and have not needed nor requested IT because in discussions with the director, the needs, the financial needs of the library fall elsewhere.
But if they really need it, they could request it?
Certainly.
So that segues into the supplementary IT information provided. I am challenged by having to read all of that. But what I get out of that bill is levels of service. The whole city is getting 24/7, 365 coverage. I don't, I question that every single department needs 24/7, 365. I saw a lot of discrepancies with, whether it's 41 machines, 35 machines. I didn't think we had that many employees for workstations. I, I just found it overwhelming, and it wasn't totally making sense to me because you gave me a bill for a contract that doesn't match here, and it also doesn't say to me, network, I mean, seven servers. I'm like, what in the world are we running with seven servers? Why do we have 35 machines? It's not put in language for me to understand, Frank. You gave me a bill, and you said, "Here it is, you asked for it." And I'm like, no, it's not rationalized for me, and it looks very expensive, and I don't understand why your staff needs 24/7, 365. Now, you can come back and tell me we have to be all these things, but right now, I don't get it.
Okay, well, the bill was to give you preliminary information, to be informed. And then I invited GCCIT to come and help articulate exactly what they provided.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan. This one's, I work for Grace Call Communications, I'm the IT manager there. So, the services that we provide, when we first did an assessment of the city, one of those services was to do an assessment, see what you have as equipment, servers, desktops, tablets, point-to-point wireless connections, phone systems, and everything you have in place. Once we have gathered all that information, then that's what we provide the quote, and what you have in front of you.
And this isn't a question of your quote, by the way. This is, what I heard is you did an audit, and you gave a quote for the equipment that we got. I'm questioning, why do we need the equipment, which isn't necessarily for you to answer.
Sure, so what I'm getting at is, the equipment that they have, is, it was already given place.
I got you.
And which is trying, we're providing a service to maintain and service the equipment.
Yep, do not question your bid at all. Yes, do, let me be very clear. I am not questioning your bid. I'm questioning what services we needed to come out and get the bid from the board. So, and that's not for you to answer.
And we had an IT professional come in and assess all the equipment, what exactly was needed, and then they prepared the bid documents for GCC and sent it out to several different firms. We got two responses. One thankfully was GCC, and the other firm that was not selected, that was slightly higher, came in. As far as equipment, what I would recommend, if you want to physically see who does what, let's take a, let's take a tour of the facilities.
Do not want to see it. I want somebody to tell me. We need three servers for dispatch and helping the police cars, or something that the rest of this audience can understand, because you're the only ones that understand. We do not understand.
Okay, then the question that you're asking is a technical question, and why exactly do these units, at police, fire, administration, public works, need this equipment? And what exactly does it back up and does it do? So it is actually a technical question.
What's the service you provide? What service does it give? What does it do?
That's a technical question, ma'am.
No, it's not. What service does it provide?
Go ahead, John. Well, I may be able to answer some of the questions regarding the servers, because we're, at the police department, we have probably most servers out of the city. A lot of that's redundancy, so if a server goes down, then we have a backup server. They're running other services through the state interface that we can't have. We can only have one server for that, for security protocol. So, a lot of it's redundancy. Our servers aren't that new, that I would say probably five to six-years-old. So, the possibility of losing a server is very high.
And it makes total sense to me. So of the seven servers, I mean, how much do we think the emergency services are requiring? Is it six of the seven?
Yes. Well, I would say at least six of the seven, because I believe the only other server is at City Hall.
Okay. Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear. That makes a lot more sense to me. I want to hear, why do we need 17 printers? Do we have a printer in every police car?
We have, the thermal printers that are, I believe, on that schedule are in each vehicle. Those are the citation writers. So, that's why you'll see a thermal printer in each vehicle. That's basically the citation writer for each car.
Is that the 17 other devices, or is that the 17 printers? Because I know there's 17 other, and there's 17 printers.
Right, so part of that is, of thermal printers is part of 17 printers.
Okay, well, there's another line item for 17, like, other devices.
Sure, we have, there's other 17 devices that we provide support. They're really not part of the contract, but we provide us...
Printers are the thermal printers. Okay, and I mean, these days, printers are commodities. I'm like, why in the world would I pay for a monthly, you know? For one month's worth of coverage, I could throw the broken one away and buy another one. So there was nothing to explain to me, 17 printers? I'm like, good God.
Yeah, and part of this, they're all interconnected.
Okay.
And so, it helps with that connection.
Okay, and four, well, now you said not 41 workstations, 35 workstations. Is that, most of that is emergency services again?
Well, workstation is just in dispatch alone. Each dispatch station has three. So you have the radio consoles have one each, which operates the communications. And then you have one for courts, and then you have one for our CAD, which is when you call 911. It interfaces, takes that information. They put the information in, and it's sent out to the officers.
Okay, so starting here, like, almost 80 to 90% of that monthly charge is really supporting emergency services?
I would say, well, just, I can only speak for the police department communication, that we, we most likely have the majority of IT, I would suspect, out of the city.
It's yours, is that most of that budget is...
Yes, that's almost correct.
That helps me. I now understand why we're paying $5,000 a month.
Administration has one server. Administration has less than, less than 10 computers. There are, for us to be able to take care of work inside and outside the office, there are some laptops, there are some mobile devices. Fire department has tablets. Now they have laptops, they did have tablets. They have workstations set up within the station to be able to perform work. There are several printers over at the fire department. And the officer's quarters has one, and then there's, I believe, there's at least one more over at the fire department.
And I'm not questioning emergency services at all. I would expect that's a service we all would gladly pay whatever we needed to make sure that they had. I'm not questioning that. It was understanding from a whole how much of it was really for emergency services. And by looking at the bill, I wasn't getting that at all. Plus, it wasn't on this budget. There were pieces all over the place. So seeing that bill, I'm like, it's not on here. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know what I want to do. I mean, there are some things I don't know if we want to discuss or not. I mean, the legal services are just like out of control.
Well, maybe, maybe we should go by category. Redundant with IT, if ever... Well, I don't know if everyone's satisfied. Does anyone have any more questions or comments about IT? Does anyone have any more questions or comments about IT? Okay. Then, what was your next thought?
Yeah. I mean, we've got to do something about legal expenses. I know they're on there and it was told to us that the increase was for, you know, not having the assistant city attorney we didn't really have. But I also know, I just saw the example of our first July bill broken out, like, what in the world we're spending our money on? Absolutely floor. So, me having to ask the questions is like, ching, ching, ching.
Well, what a long deal. What did you say that you talked about today?
The majority of our costs are having legal be at these lengthy meetings and for open record requests. It's huge. Which to me says, we have problems with communication and are causing open record act requests and us sitting at long meetings. And I'm very concerned with that increase. It's getting too big. I mean, I don't even know if that's the right size of spend for a city the size.
I think a lot of people probably in terms of long meetings.
Believe me, I do too. I wish my questions would get answered and I wouldn't have to ask.
I may be able to help you on the open records request. I may be able, the majority of those probably come to the police department by the attorney general. We have to typically send them to the city attorney so that we don't get any type of litigation for releasing information that may not need to be released. And with the transparency of the government, which we should be, it's very important that we safeguard the information that shouldn't be released so that we don't get into, I mean, I know you feel that litigation or the expense is high, but if we get into a litigation, it's going to be much higher. It'll be, you know, substantial for litigation if we release some information that we shouldn't have. With child custody issues, body cams have, I mean, there's a lot of requests that comes from really outside the realm. We have people that request open record requests for all the code violations in the city so that they can determine whether a house is going into foreclosure or not. So, we don't want to release your information or anyone else's improperly.
Well, no, thank you for that, because I did not know that was going on. So I think the transparency of finally getting the legal bills broken out like that now leads us into the next question of, well gee, then how much of those open records, I mean, how much are police and how much are other?
And honestly, it's probably going to continue to increase as information, people want information. You know, whether it be someone that doesn't like someone or whatever it may be, whether it be a criminal investigation that they're trying to skirt the system instead of going through discovery, hiring an attorney, they'll find open record requests, which we send to the city attorney, typically they send to attorney general's office. So, and we have, you know, we only have a window to respond to those requests. And, you know, we get requests through the media that we have to make sure that we're not releasing information that would be harmful to either the victim or the suspect, really.
Maybe at some point we need to understand the process around doing these and utilizing legal time, because it's just got huge.
Maybe it's a procedural problem instead of at the last.
And just for everyone's understanding, on the Public Information Act request, there is certain information, if you want to withhold anything, you have to, there are a few things the AG has said, if you're redacting a citizen's email, a few, a list of things, you can just redact it and you don't have to send it to the AG and ask their permission before you redact. But that's very few things. There are actually things in that act which says, it's a criminal act for a member of staff to give out certain types of information. And even though this is where Austin doesn't make sense sometimes, it is a criminal act for them to give it out. However, they're not allowed to redact it without sending it to the attorney general and asking for permission to redact it. And I guess that's a safeguard so the attorney general can be sure only stuff that should be redacted is redacted, but it puts them at great risk if something does wrong. It's actually a criminal violation.
I totally appreciate that. Like I said, I think it's the transparency of understanding the legal breakout now of saying, okay, where is this, where are we really spending our money? And understanding that, because it's becoming a large bill.
Ms. Salmon said something just now about being a procedural problem, and I wonder if part of that question is, are you getting some requests that you really shouldn't, shouldn't be getting? Are you getting any that we should be able to handle here in-house without having to send to you?
I don't think we do.
No, I don't believe that it's a procedural issue. I mean, you don't want a staff member making a decision that they're not trained to, that's where you're going to get into litigation. If you don't want the, you know, if you have a clerk or dispatcher or records clerk releasing information, that's where you're going to get in trouble because they don't have the training, nor should they be making those decisions to release that valuable information. I mean, we, it's a pretty standard, we probably receive, I don't know, maybe two to three requests a day somewhat, so.
And it's probably, I think the procedure maybe, and I'm not, to be honest, procedure question might not just apply to that part. I think it's really understanding how we utilize legal services, because I don't, I'm not questioning them. You guys know more about the process and what you need to do than we do.
Anything for legal services, any more questions? Anyone else want counsel?
Having legal services or anything?
Well, I, I'm assuming she has the list of things that she wants to discuss, and so we'll go by her list and.
No, no, I didn't have a list, Tom. I just like to warn her.
Well then, I can open it up. Does anyone have?
I do. And I don't know if I want this for Mr. Baker or Mr. Doppler, but this pertains to the fire department EMS, and it can have six full-time employees, four part-time employees. And I have been asked a question for which I have no answer, and I would like it answered. We have two ambulances, right? Which one am I directing this to?
You're directing that to me, ma'am.
Okay. I'll direct that to Mr. Baker. We have two ambulances. I was asked this question.
Yes, ma'am.
Was I aware that we did not, did not have enough staff that if we have a call for an ambulance, we can only send one ambulance out at a time? And does that mean that if I have a heart attack and Mr. Whitaker has a heart attack, that this ambulance can only go to one house because we're understaffed in the fire department and EMT?
We're not understaffed. We staff one full-time unit. That's been the standard for.
So even though we have two, we can only use, we only use one?
We typically staff the second one with part-time personnel. Part-time personnel are typically used, looking for a full-time position with another department. When we lose them, we fill in with more part-time personnel that apply from the department. So we're continually putting out job postings for firefighter EMTs, firefighter paramedics. So as we have the staffing and we have the available people, we put them on the schedule. But typically, what the demand is, is to staff that second unit, that second ambulance. Our call volume at the fire department has not increased significantly. Typically, they're making four and a half, five calls a shift, and that makes it within a 24-hour shift that they're, about every four to five hours, they're making a call. What is occurring more frequently is during peak demand, is they're having called stacking calls, where they'll have one call and then another call within succession within the hour, and will need a second unit. Thankfully, more times than less, we have a second unit staffed. But that is during peak demand. Of course, we are covering for EMS, we're covering with these people. We're not just covering EMS, we're covering fire. Eighty, over 80% of those calls are EMS calls. Less than 20% are fire, hazmat, car wreck calls, okay? Unless EMS is needed, have to call them versus the gas turbine block or what have you. We do have volunteers. We have a few volunteers and they do devote their time and they do an excellent job for us. And they supplement as far as firefighting and as far as blocking on accidents and other calls and other capacities where they can function. But we are covering Gunner under contract, we're covering Howe under contract, we're covering Grayson County under contract. We're not covering Collin County. When we call for a backup unit, we're typically calling for Sherman to come and back us up. So, what we are doing during peak demand is covering those calls with a part-time unit. Sometimes it's BLS and sometimes it's ALS. You ask, what is ALS? ALS is a paramedic-staffed unit. BLS is a double EMT-staffed unit. We take what we can get because of what we pay and the availability of personnel, qualified personnel up here in Van Alstine.
Okay. So you've got this ambulance and it's staffed, and then you need to call in the part-time call all the time?
They're part-time, they're part-time from seven, currently the peak demand is from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, 10-hour shift, and then they are on-call with a 20-minute, expected 20-minute response time back to the station. And typically, that is not necessarily to cover an EMS call, it's to cover a medical transport, which we still continue to do because we need the revenue to substantiate the staffing and expenditures within the department, as well as if should we have a fire call, a major fire, we need as many personnel as possible, so they are on-call for that, for the rest of that shift.
Okay. So each time the ambulance goes out, the police go out also?
Yes, ma'am.
And does, the fire truck doesn't go out?
The fire truck should not go out unless it's a major medical or an MVA, and the fire engine would typically only roll if it was staffed by volunteers of the department because the full-time personnel are typically going to go on the medical unit if it's a medical call.
My concern is we only have six employees.
Two per shift. Yes, ma'am.
Two per, two per shift?
Yes, ma'am.
So if they're out and the second call comes in, that call's got to wait 20 minutes?
No, ma'am. That call, that call, that call is pushed over by Van Alstine dispatch to Grayson County and we request Sherman's assistance.
So we, the second call has to wait until Sherman's ambulance gets given?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. And so one of the factors.
I want the first call if I'm going to get serious.
So typically.
I know we're laughing, but this is serious.
It is serious. It is serious.
It's a very serious issue.
So one of the policies, in talking to the medical director last year, was to follow the state guidelines, through the regional advisory committee, to go to the closest perfect facility, and that closest perfect facility for 99% of what is done for a patient is Wilson and Jones. We don't currently transport to Baylor McKinney, we don't transport to McKinney Medical Center McKinney, or to TMC. Reason being is, we need the fastest turnaround possible, because when people are calling us for an emergency event, we need to get them to the closest facility that is appropriate, and we need to get that unit back in service.
So it's a matter of keeping that ambulance going as to where you take them to?
And that conversation was, we had a meeting with, the lieutenants requested a meeting. We had one yesterday morning with personnel, and it was reemphasized that when you look, when you get to the patient's house, you start treating them, you get them loaded up. If you need to get an IV in them, because typically you don't want to be doing an IV in something that's moving, you get them loaded up, you get that IV, and you get moving. Because we need that unit back in service to serve the next patient.
So the only place that our, no, not our, ambulance is, can take you is Wilson and Jones Hospital?
Currently, because following state regional advisory committee guidelines.
Even if you refuse to go? I mean, it's either that or you don't go.
If it's an emergency, then you go to the closest perfect facility, and currently it is Wilson and Jones.
Yeah, but I've written that it wasn't an emergency to the point was life or death, and I don't want to go more. So you're basically telling me if I call, you're going to come, and then I'm going to find out that I can't go where I want to go?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I have a problem because my insurance company's going to pay that bill, which you want.
If you're out taken to the closest perfect facility, your insurance company may not pay that bill.
Yeah, but they're at the same distance.
Not by time, and that's not true.
I think the insurance will pay so many miles to the closest facility and then after that you're charged for it.
Yes.
But the insurance will pay that first distance. Say you want to go somewhere that's 30 miles, but the closest one is 20, your insurance will pay 20, and you're out the bill for the other 10.
That is in some instances. We've also seen instances where the insurance company will not pay because the patient did not go to the closest perfect facility. And when it is in the notes that the patient desired to go further, it was their desire and it was not deemed an emergency, so therefore the bill was not paid.
My other question is, do we have a contact with CareFlatt?
We do. We do call CareFlatt. CareFlatt's our first call. If anybody wished to set up a, whatever it is, is it a, no, it's not a contract, it's a membership. CareFlatt offers memberships to anybody and everybody, and I believe if you see the big billboards going down the highways, like 45, 50 bucks a month. If they come and get you, and we can call for a CareFlatt helicopter if you want to go to anywhere but Wilson and Jones, they'll comp your bill, but you're paying that insurance, that membership fee.
Is a CareFlatt out of Benton?
Currently, I was told yesterday that CareFlatt's no longer out of Frisco, the closest one is in Gainesville.
Uh, yeah, and McKinney.
And McKinney? Okay, so McKinney and Gainesville.
So if you need a CareFlatt, not CareFlatt, but if you really need it, there's a helicopter about five miles from you, but we're not, we can't call them?
Air Evac is on our call list. Air Evac is not our first call. Reason being is, if somebody is going to a Level 1 trauma center, Air Evac does two things. They will not transport a working CPR, or if it is a child, they will not transport the parent. Those are the two big issues with Air Evac. Plus, the bird that is coming from either CareFlatt or PHI is quite, very, is, well, is a lot faster, a lot more powerful, a lot faster. So even though that unit may be further away.
It's all the way to Gainesville, right?
Well, one is in Gainesville, one's in McKinney, so whichever one's.
CareFlatt in McKinney?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. That's what Ryan just said. Yes, ma'am. So, and there's also PHI. If those units come and get you, it may be a few more minutes us caring for the patient before they land, but when those birds get up and move them, they are going at almost twice the rate of the Air Evac unit. So you have a CareFlatt unit that will take a patient, a child, and the family member, the parent, and also they will take a working CPR. So if you have a patient that's degrading and they turn into a CPR and the unit that you've called for is Air Evac, when they get to the scene, they will not take that patient. You've got to turn around and you've got to call for CareFlatt. So to cut that out, we call CareFlatt. That's our first call. Plus, they fly IFR instead of VFR, and what that means is, IFR is an instrument-rated unit, and they will fly in inclement weather. Air Evac will not fly in inclement weather. They are a VFR unit. This has been scrutinized for years, and so this is what we do. And the whole interest is, is not, not just in getting that primary patient to the facility and getting them stabilized, so that way if they want to go to their hospital, which is Baylor McKinney or Parkland or Zalipshia or wherever it is, they can be transferred and they can be seen by their physician in their facility where they have rights, but for them to be stabilized, they need to go to the closest perfect facility, and that facility is currently Wilson and Jones.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
I just stand from front on through, though. I do have, are you comfortable with just six employees for that? And is this, the six employees you have on the budget, the, I've lost it. The EMS and the fire department is one in the budget?
Yes.
So there is six employees to cover the fire department and the ambulance?
Yes.
Okay. We have a fire, and how many go out on the fire truck?
The personnel that show up. So typically the volunteers, and who typically goes initially and sets up command and does the initial attack or does the initial assessment, make sure that everybody's out of the house, is the gentleman, the firefighter, small man, yes, sir? Yes, sir.
Teddy, I just want to clarify something real quick. Is the mission of the fire leaves containment or proof? To, you're gonna let it burn and just contain it, or are you trying to put it outside the problem?
Okay, so that answer is gonna be it depends. It depends on how many personnel we have on the scene, it depends on how, how far the fire has progressed. If it's an incipient stage fire, which ends up being the contents of the structure, and there are people inside, then you can go in with just two. If it is a structure fire and the structure itself is involved, the roof is burning and everything is going, then it is what is considered two in, two out, and you better have two people outside for every two people you've got inside. And so it depends on, it depends on how many personnel response are.
All right, so if you only have three guys show up, that structural fire is pretty much out.
Depending on what stage that fire is in. So will it be a defensive fire in some instances? Yes, sir, it sure will, because we're gonna not, we're gonna try and make sure that everybody's out, and then we're gonna try and make sure that it's extinguished, and it's not gonna extend or become a conflagration, and we're gonna lose multiple structures, and we're going to threaten or endanger more people. So your, your contents in your house are not as important as everybody in it, and they're not as important if it's already on fire as the personnel, nor the neighbors in the house next door that is not on fire. So it is all, always a risk benefit assessment, and that is done by, typically by the shift lieutenant.
And it's based on how many people show up?
That's exactly right, yes, sir.
My final question is, are you comfortable with just six employees or an ambulance and fire?
Man, this loop has been operating for years, am I comfortable?
I know, but we are growing, everybody's going to get it.
My answer is still, still ongoing. I'm not comfortable with that, I'm not comfortable with the amount of police personnel that we have, I'm not comfortable with the number of library employees, I'm not comfortable that we don't have a permanent clerk, I'm not comfortable that we don't have a planner, that we don't have a finance, that we don't have a finance director. I'm not comfortable with any of this, but the finances that we have, the budget that is put in front of you, is the best use of our funds.
Okay. On the Howe, and since we provide, I forget which service, the Howe and-
Howe and Gunner.
Do we know for sure we do not take a loss for any of their work? I know the city takes a loss by offering those services.
As far as EMS or, as far as EMS work for, for Howe or Gunner?
Yeah.
Well, as far as the quid pro quo and the finances of it, do we charge them exactly what we need to be charging them? No, ma'am, because there are other, there are other services out there that they could actually choose to use. So one of the things that we need, that we need to consider whenever we're charging them annually, is what's the reciprocation? Whenever we do have a fire, Howe and Gunner do come and they help extinguish the fire and they, and they give us relief as the fire belongs. One of the other things is, we need the call volume. So not only are you getting revenue from the municipality itself to provide service in the contract, but the call itself, the bill that goes out that we receive, money back from, is reciprocation also. So we need the call volume, because if we cut off Howe and we cut off Gunner, well, that's money that we're not getting in billings.
But my question was, how do you know it's revenue and not, and not loss? And I heard some squishy stuff with reciprocation, and I'm like, do you put that into a contract that says we feel we have the right level of reciprocation? How are you supposed to quantify a contract with them, and how do you know it's not loss? Are you certain it's a revenue strain?
Because we watch the EMS dealings, we watch the money going out and money going in a monthly, and we have a conference call with the building company.
So you're telling me you know it's making money?
It is making money. Does it make as much as it did five years ago? No. Medicare, Medicare, Medicaid, and the payer mix that we have of private payers, it is not as robust as it used to be. But are we making, are we making money? Yes, we're offsetting expenditures with the revenue that's gained off of the calls that we're making in Gunner now.
Okay, I just don't want to be paying for Gunner and Howe.
Okay, I have a comment, because I think often we forget the public, and I think we forget to tell them anything that they might have overlooked or that they're not aware of, and I think it's important that you stay informed. So we did the Department of Public Works budget earlier, we did not get this budget until we were to go over it August the 1st, it was canceled, we did not even go over it until the 8th, so we're still asking questions, but we did go over the Department of Public Works budget earlier, and we have in our budget an engineering fund because we are considering Addison, or their budget will be passed, a new Department of Public Works building. We own 17 acres out of the sewer plant, the land is ours, we already own it. Everything that we do in planning this budget, we realize that it's going to have an impact on what we do in the future, and the dedication of the madness, the Department of Public Works building is there to help that. We have in our damn central business district, we have the trucks and the gravel and everything, and regardless of what we do in the future, this is not something we will want in this central business district or in the historical district, so the council is moving forward with this plan, and I think it's important that you are aware that we are moving forward with this because it is a necessity. I've been here a long time, but I know people have been here longer, and that building's been here longer than any, any time. This is, this, it is really in very poor condition. I hate to disappoint the front, but it's in worse condition than City Hall. So it is our next issue in that we are, we do have that in the budget, the plans for us to move forward, and that's moving forward. I know everybody looks toward what we're going to do and what the future's gonna be, but sometimes they stay back from looking and say, we need to do something now to prepare for tomorrow, we can't wait until we're 5,000 or we're 5,000 down the road. There are some issues that we can do now, and this is one of them, and it is in our budget, and I doubt that you're aware of it because it's not here, I don't know. And I would really like to know how many people in this audience have gone over our Two. One because she's in, she's in an apartment that's in the budget, and that, you know, that's really, that's really disappointing, because I think it is, it's your budget and it is definitely your money, and I would like to see the public be more interested in our budget and the things that we do. Tonight, we all came together, they all worked for the library, it was wonderful, and I would like to see more interest in that, and I thank you. That's all I have to say.
Can I ask any comments or questions about, about the budget?
Actually, I just, it's more of a clarification than a question. I raised a question at the budget workshop, you know, the statement was made that our, Van Alstine's tax price values have gone down approximately $9 million from 2016 to 2017, and I had a hard time understanding that, because I've had numerous people asking me, how in the world does Van Alstine's property values go down when the average homeowner's property value is going up by over 10%, mine included? So I was given some information from county, county president district on the city of Van Alstine, and I did a side-by-side comparison of 2016 to 2017. So very briefly, I've got a, I've got a detailed compilation here, but for everyone's identification that asked about it, the land values in Van Alstine in 2016 were just under 70 million, in 2017 they're just over 80 million, which is a $10 million increase. The improvements, which would be homes, buildings, et cetera, in 2016 the total was 163 million, and in 2017 it's over 188 million, which is a $25 million increase. Those two together come up to over $35 million increased property value, okay? Where it drops down to the 8 million, excuse me, 9 million, is non-real property, which would be inventory, personal assets, whatnot, that's taxed on. In 2016 it was 55 and a half million dollars, in 2017 it was just under 25 million dollars, which is 30 million dollar drop, and I'm assuming that is attributable to Caterpillar shutting its doors and leaving.
Yes, sir.
I didn't realize that that impact was that large.
Yes, sir.
So-
We're feeling it this year, the school district will feel it next year.
Okay, so as a result, the total exemptions and whatnot, you know, for bag use or 165 or whatnot, those increased from just over 18 million to over 28 million, which causes another $10 million drop in value, and those taxes that are frozen, those from 29 million to 31 million, which is another $2 million drop. So that arrives at the numbers that were presented, the 206 million approximately that is, the tax price value in 2017 is down almost 9 million from the 215 million last year, which, based on the calculation, you come up with the expenses in your budget and you back into the revenues to come into a balanced budget, which arrives at, you know, you use the tax price value and you back into the tax rate. So as a result of our losing Caterpillar, that's where the .65 comes from, the supposed to claim 6.1 last year. And, you know, whether, whether we accept that or not, the taxpayers are picking up the burden of, if we accept the tax rate as it is, the taxpayers are picking up the burden of Caterpillar leaving, and you said, our, next year we're gonna have the school district and, oh, yeah, LeCor, LeCor's gonna be building, I'm sure they won't get to Caterpillar's level, it's time soon, but anyway.
And I think I'll add to that once again, I don't think it's balanced budget because we're gonna spend what comes in. My concern is that I don't want to ask you all to pay more in taxes, because I know I don't get to go tell my employer, two is, I made a bad drive, I bought a crappy car, I need you to pay me more so that I can make up for that gap. So, you know, I'm still sitting here on the fence about asking to, you know, I mean, we, we're $260,000, $263,000 over in expenditures from last year, we just took out $100,000, took out $100,000 for the, that was my call, the LeCor. Yeah, I, I personally feel it's our responsibility to find the under $160 some dollars in our budget, and it'll be back next year. We know we're gonna have the reefer talks coming in, we should place LeCor, it will come. I do feel that I'm not asking for cutting services in EMS, I would not do that, I would have a, maybe increase. I think we have some places in there that we just do without. There's some new things we put in here that I'm like, yeah, it'd be great to have them, but I think maybe we just have to postpone them.
First, let me, um, everything that Robert went through, that whole calculation, it's called the effective rate. I don't know if anybody knows what the effective rate is, and, remember the effective rate? So it's effective rate, what's great about this, and I learned about it from TML, Texas Municipal League, I really like them, they're great. Well, they teach you a lot. The one thing that's very great about the effective rate is that it's not a tax rate that goes up all the time. So when more houses come in and we generate more revenue, the effective rate comes down. It doesn't always go up, it comes, it, it fluctuates, it's effective based on the revenue. So if we've raised another company, if another company comes in or we get more businesses in town and we have a surplus, then they, then that rate can come back down. So it's definitely not something that's written in stone, it is a fluctuating rate, and that's what I think is pretty neat about, you know, where we're at.
Comments or questions, or are we ready for, this is the motion we need?
You, you only need a motion if you want to change the rate from the one you voted on at the last meeting. If you're not going to make a change, then you don't need another vote.
Can I ask, can I ask a question real quick? Given the last meeting, there, I sensed from council, you know, a lot of apprehension in discussing any sort of tax raise, that's not an easy position to be in, so I don't know if staff maybe huddled up and said, you know, is there a couple of other things that maybe we could look at, cutting, maybe some projects to pull up to next year, I don't know if that's something that, that occurred.
I mean, that's my challenge with this process, is it's like I'm forced to approve a rate, and I'd much rather tell you, and I experience it at work, I'd say, go back to the board and come back with something and you negotiate it. I feel very forced to vote on the tax rate, I'm not getting any options for what can I do to, you know, find and negotiate anything here. It's either do this or don't, and do I know what the magic rate is below .66, whatever it is? I don't know what that, that rate is, I just, I don't want to raise the expenses beyond what they were last year. And do you mind if I just-
Were you looking for a response?
For me?
Yes, yeah, okay.
Can I make one more comment real quick?
Sure, have it.
I do want to say first and foremost also before Frank speaks that everything in that budget that you guys are asking for are working. I don't want you to, I know y'all spent a lot of hard work on this budget, and I don't want to minimize that, I don't want y'all to feel like we don't appreciate that. I hope y'all as staff understand the position that we're in, asking these folks to, you know, spend more money, it's not an easy place to be, but that's why we're here, so I hope y'all understand that.
Starting to answer your question, if the tax rate is set at .635138, staff could recommend removing 40,626 from 10-400-6703, which is contract services and admin, for the digitization of the permanent records, since City Hall's not as bad, in as bad a shape as Public Works, and may not fall down this next year, and we may not lose those permanent records. And also reduce 10-409811, which is our transfers out to reserves from 27,000 this year, 27-56606 to 10,3165. Those are the, those are the things that can, that staff could recommend to lower the rate to .635138.
Can I, I want to make one more comment about that recommendation. I hate having to deny anything that you guys are asking for about those things.
It's-
Both of those things I feel are necess, are important, so I just want that to be stated to you.
Board, Suzanne said, if we do that .63 to Judy-
For Suzanne's sake, if we do that .63, did Judy get her assistant in the library?
Sir, what I just stated are the only two changes to the budget that's been presented to council.
I don't want Suzanne to shut down the library.
Sir, anything that's done for, to the city, is done by the body of council.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one more comment?
Sir.
It's been discussed that this fiscal year is going to be a lean year. We kind of do that going into when we lost Caterpillar. So, it's not going to be easy. Are we going to be able to bring on some more administrative staff, maybe? Hopefully, some of that stuff pans out. But I just ask the citizens to bear with us through this next fiscal year until we're able to get the corps onboard, get some more homes online, so we can bring that tax rate back up.
But asking those to bear with us means they are saying, we will go ahead and let you raise our tax rate. I mean, it's nice to say bear with me, but it's another thing for me to give you another $100 out of my pocket. I don't want to bear with you that much. So, I mean, honestly, and I'm not trying to be smart. There's a big difference between I'd love to help the city and do I really want to give you the money. It's the same folks that want a bike path, but they don't want it on their street. It's like, no, you know. So, I'm still challenged of saying, giving more money.
That was not a statement in regards to, or against, it's a challenge either way.
Amber, or...
It's a challenge if the rate, if the tax rate is raised. It's a challenge for these folks. If we lower that tax rate as what's proposed, then it can still be a challenge for these folks, because, you know, ma'am.
I wanted to say the same tax bill it was last year, is what I'm saying. I want it to be the same. They already ate it last year. That's fine. Keep going. I don't want to ask them for more. Because I think we sat on here looking for the chart that tells you how much it goes up. There's some chart that gave an example about how much more it costs to, there it is. Yeah, because we're talking about another $75, $100 a year.
All right, so is there, is it the consensus? Or is there a motion to change the rate earlier stated of 0.663198 per $100 of value? Is there a motion to make a change to that?
I would make a motion that we lower it to whatever. .6. .635138. Understand, council, any lower, any motion that you make to lower the tax rate, cannot go back up. I know that I received input. I hear what you're saying. I'm just letting you know one more time. You lower it, it cannot go back up.
And I don't know what that means.
During this year, correct?
During this year.
That means that if you lower it to .63, .61, or anything, no amount of money can be added back in to the tax rate.
For a year?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're talking about.
I know. I wanted to understand why you kept saying that. I'm like, well, of course, we're talking about a year's budget. Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, we can...
If I could clarify, you probably would need two motions. One would be to revoke the proposed rate previously voted on, which is the number that's on the agenda. And then, there's a motion written out, which is specific language that has to be used to propose a tax rate. So it would be a second motion using that exact language with the numbers filled in, the 635138.
Do you have the...
Yes, I have the mayor.
Is there a motion to revoke the former proposed or the proposed tax rate of .663198 per $100 of value?
I'll make a motion. We're going to reject that proposed tax rate for 2017 of .663198 per $100 of value.
All right, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on the revocation of that tax rate? See no hands? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? All right, now I'm just going to read this verbatim here, and then ask if anyone wants to make the motion. What you'll be saying is, I make a motion to propose a tax rate of 0.635138 per $100 of value for fiscal year 2017-2018, tax given 2017. Does anyone so move something? All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. Is there any more discussion?
And that's, Frank, that's the digitization, and cut the other one in half, right?
Sir, that's removing the digitization and postponing it hopefully until next year. And then also taking the transfer out to reserves from $27,566 and $610 down to $10,0031065.
Which is the amount that the auditor suggested that we start to have that reserve. Is that not what the line item says about that reserve?
The dollar amount isn't the recommendation, but that's the intent for the funds.
The intent for the funds is to stay within the three to six months.
To have two, three months' worth of expenses in an account.
Yes, ma'am.
We have none.
Not in terms of...
No.
Do you all know what line item he's talking about?
It's transfers out. It's towards the bottom of your general fund, and it goes into reserves annually at the end of the year.
Which the auditor suggested we have two, three months' worth of operating.
Three to six months?
Three, six.
And we currently have 3.4.
We do have 3.4. Okay. What I saw was like 0.05.
No, you're talking about the general fund. So utility fund does actually have it. So, the two different funds, one is not funded to that level, and the other is.
And that's an improvement. I mean, it hasn't always been so.
No, we need to keep working on it.
Careful management over these last few years that that's happened. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? See no hands? All in favor? It is unanimous? And so the...
This is the tax rate? Oh, right, this is not the budget.
Correct.
The tax rate of 0.635138 per $100 of value. Is it dollars? All right, and that's all we need to do? All right, so...
Van Alston and Gunner tied?
Have no idea. The game's over, that's all I know.
All right, so we may adjourn now. Another business, not at the time, is 8:57. We can do that? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. I'll make it to the second.
I have a second.
All right, do you want to vote?